Why can't I? Oh my God.
It's okay, take a second.
Warning in progress.
No.
Thank you. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's October thirteenth, 2021. It's about 6:02. Our next meeting will be October 27th. We'll also have a special meeting on October 25th to discuss the warrants. This is a hybrid meeting, which means that it's also Zoom as well as in person. The members of the Board of Selectmen are in person. I would just ask them to identify themselves. Selectmen.
And who?
Dr. Z.
President.
And Campuchico Chairman is also present. This has been recorded. It is going to be a tribute on Channel Nine as we speak, and it's also on YouTube. I would ask everybody to stand for the pleasure of allegiance, and please remain standing.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Since the last meeting.
Please remain standing, please.
Since the last meeting, the following Dayton residents have passed. Our condolences go out to their families. Tori Andrews, thirty-five years of age, graduated from the class of 2004 from Dayton Rehoboth. Dorothy Estes, ninety-two of Dayton, was a longtime Dayton resident. And Ralph Potter, seventy-five of North Dayton, and a retired member of the Todd Municipal Lighting Plan. Our condolences to their families. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation. This is from the Board of Selectmen. Whereas October 20th, 21 marks thirty-six years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer within their lifetime, and whereas nearly forty-two thousand women die from breast cancer each year in the United States, and whereas in 2021, more than two-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty new cases of breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed, and whereas increased breast cancer screening increases early detection, reduces death, increases life expectancy, decreases late-stage cancer diagnosis, and increases five-year survival rates. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also recognize more than three-point-eight million breast cancer survivors, those currently battling the disease and their families and friends who are tireless source of love and encouragement. We commend the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas we honor the lives of those who have lost their fight against breast cancer, standing with those who remember their loved ones. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dayton, on the thirteenth day of October 2021, recognize the month of October 2021 to be Breast Awareness, Cancer Awareness Month, and urge all the citizens of the Town of Dayton to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in the observance. And assigned by the Chairman Campuchico, Leonard Holes, the clerk, and Brexler Goffis, who is a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation as presented this evening.
Second.
For a second discussion. Just want to add that we've all been touched, I'm sure, family members and friends who have suffered with breast cancer and someone who have passed away. So our thoughts are with all those families and friends who have had to experience this terrible disease. I'll ask for a vote. Selectmen, hold.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Thank you. Scheduled appointments recognition. This is for the Terry family. We have a certificate of recognition. We, under sign, do hereby recognize Janice and Charles Terry, to whom we extend as a sincere appreciation for your extremely generous donation to the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District in honor of your daughter Lisa, as well as the many years of tireless support you have given to the Town of Dayton schools. A witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the great seal of the Town of Dayton to be affixed on this thirteenth day of October, 2021. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dayton, signed by the Chairman Kenneth Campuccico, Leonard Holes, who is our clerk, and Dr. Z, Goffis, who is a member. I just want to thank you for speaking for our community, the Dyke community, for the great donation, the generous donation that you made. And I know your daughter suffered from some difficulties. And I know, Mrs. Terry, you've been a big advocate on the school committee for those special needs students. And in particular, a family member of mine benefited from the hard work that you have done. So I can't say enough for what you have done in your donation and what you've done in your whole life as supporting this very important issue. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to add, the reason why I asked for this to be on the agenda was not just for the donation. I know that serving on school committee probably sometimes feels like a thankless job for you, Mrs. Terry, but I wanted to know that I also was someone that benefited from your work. Specifically, you were an advocate and a strong force behind rebuilding the middle school back in the nineties, and I was one of the first classes to go through all four years and graduate from the middle school and go on to the high school. So I also wanted to thank you for everything that you have done as a family and that you have done specifically as a school committee member. So, thank you.
Selectmen, hold. Take a seat. Selectmen, hold.
The source of this money actually is our daughter Lisa's 401K, which she got working at Bristol County Savings Bank. She had to sort and deliver mail, and she'd be very happy to know that we donated this money to people with special needs. They taught her how to read, which really got her the job of reading, sorting, delivering mail for twenty years or more at Bristol County Savings Bank. She'd be very happy to know this is where the money was going.
Thank you. Selectmen, hold.
I had the awesome privilege of serving on the school committee with Janice, and she has touched this community in so many ways. She was also a very big part in the addition that was placed on the elementary school. But let us not forget the contributions made by Charlie Terry, as a former member of the Board of Selectmen here in this town. The Terry family has played a major role in this community for many, many years, and want to thank you for your sacrifice and follow you've done for the town.
Thank you very much.
Entertainer motion to accept this certificate of recognition.
So moved with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Selectmen, hold.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Want to give you a copy? Give you the.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Lisa was such a joy to our family, and she and I used to spend a lot of time talking and telling crazy stories, and she thought her dad was just the greatest thing that ever happened, and he was number one. I share this story because I think it's so funny. She would always say, "Dad's number one." So I said to her one day, "Well, what am I? Well, how old are you?" That's what I, how, you know, at that time, I probably was in my forties or fifties, but that's where I came on her line of people, that Dad was definitely number one, and she was number one in our lives. She just such a pleasure, such a joy, and brought so much joy to the people that she worked with, family. She had three older brothers that she thought were pretty terrific, and they looked after her, that she was their little sister. So, so, she's so missed. We have a private cemetery, so she's very right on our land, which we often visit a couple of times a day, and I can still tell the stories about her dad and how he's behaving or not behaving. But she used to get out from a lot of office too, so he was battling two women in his life, so, but now it's one, working with two. I represent, so, and dealing with the dad, so, but we're happy. We'll continue doing it as long as we can. We're both in our eighties, so we don't know whether we're done another twenty years or anything. We'll see. As school committee, over thirty years, a lot has changed, but it's still, I still enjoy if I get up and have to go to a meeting, and if I start complaining about it, then it's the time to get out. So, so far, I still keep going, so, but time might be running out on that too. We'll see. Thank you all so very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
I should nine years of that stuff.
Any advice? Get up while you can? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I go to the home of watch what's going on. I have a few phone numbers I can call.
Thank you again.
Good night. Congratulations.
The next agenda item on the scheduled appointment recognitions is community electricity aggregation program. Mr. John Rock is here. Do you want to go to the microphone?
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for allowing me to come before you tonight to give you an update on the community electricity aggregation. As you may remember, the planning for this community electricity aggregation started back in 2014. As a matter of fact, it was January 2014 when Ross Perry, who was then the Director of Municipal Services for the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, known as SERPHEAD, decided that a community electricity aggregation for the towns served by SERPHEAD would be a good thing to do. So essentially, the planning got underway. It took a while to get things through the Department of Public Utilities. And again, this started with eighteen communities here in mostly Bristol County, the SERPHEAD region. Since then, it has added seven communities, not all in this area, they're from other areas. So we've got twenty-five communities in this aggregation. It has become the largest aggregation of its kind, not only in Massachusetts, but in the country. So it's, you know, really an important, important community activity, an important function that all the towns who are participating in got together and did. I have a short presentation. That first slide goes over enrollments. Essentially, there's a graph there, but since this started in January 2016, that's a little small to read, so I just took out some of the highlights. In January of 2016, at the launch, there were eighteen hundred eighty-seven households or accounts involved. Essentially, Dayton has about twenty-eight hundred households, so that's a pretty good percentage coming into the aggregation to start. In August of 2021, in our most recent month that we have numbers on, there were nineteen hundred and ninety-eight participating accounts. So again, this is, this is a good number. The maximum in the aggregation for just Dayton, as of July 2019, was about twenty-one hundred and three, and the minimum as of December 2017 was eighteen hundred thirty-four. And you're always going to get a certain amount of fluctuation in these numbers, all right? You might notice on the, on the chart, there are a couple of blips where the numbers go up. What happens with National Grid and certainly with every source that we deal with, we get new accounts from them every four to five months, and we send out letters to those new accounts if they want to join the aggregation. So that's what those blips are in that graph. On that next slide, it shows you the accumulated savings. And again, whenever we mention the word savings, the Department of Public Utilities wants us to put in a disclaimer that savings are not guaranteed, although again, this aggregation has been very successful historically. And you can see that graph, the current savings for Dayton, eight-hundred-thirty-eight thousand. It's a very good number. I'm going to come back to this graph after I go through a couple of more of these slides. But on that next rate comparison chart, you'll see that the National Grid rates, which are adjusted every six months, are on the blue line, and the orange line is the rate for the aggregation. So you can tell out of the, out of the twelve adjustment periods since January of 2016, we have beaten the rate for National Grid in nine of those. So we're doing very well in terms of providing the residents with benefits. And again, benefits is sort of a savings value, so I have to say that future savings are not guaranteed. You'll notice that on all of our slide presentations now at the bottom, we have that disclaimer that says savings cannot be guaranteed because future National Grid basic service rates are unknown. You'll notice that the, at the end of this, the right side of this chart, is the latest adjustment from National Grid that was announced in the middle of September. Their rate is going to fourteen-eight-two-one per kilowatt hour. And you can see that comparison on that next page, that rate comparison. This was, we were, we were thinking that this would be a high rate on this adjustment, but we weren't expecting fourteen-eight-two. As you might be aware, since about April, there has been a natural gas spike in prices. Natural gas has almost doubled since then. Natural gas is a precursor for electricity rates, so that's why, probably, most of the reason why this is so high. And you can see the rates for the aggregation, the standard rate, which is again, the rate that everybody was put into automatically, is that ten-four-seven rate, okay? So there's quite a difference between that standard rate and the National Grid rate. In this last renewal, many of the SERPHEAD towns opted to have two optional green products, and essentially, there's a green fifty percent, and there's a green hundred percent, which means that your, the mix of your fuel has fifty percent more green energy in it. And you can see that that rate is twelve-two-four-four. And again, this is for anyone who wants to have more renewable electricity within their fuel mix. And as you can see, that green one-hundred rate for this adjustment period is still below that National Grid rate. On that last slide, you know, the enrollment trends, both in Dayton and the rest of the SERPHEAD communities, have been in a very tight range, which indicates a very good acceptance by the residents and businesses of the aggregation. And we're very pleased with the way this has established itself over the last six years. Again, cumulative savings, we expect to continue to show a favorable trend, although future savings are not guaranteed. If we just go back to that savings chart, you're going to see, the next time that we update, you're going to see a huge jump in this cumulative savings number because of that next, that next period. Any questions?
So my first question is regarding enrollment, you had said that the trends remain stable. How does someone enroll?
There's a, there's a website that people can go to. You can see that on, on your copy, there's a copy of that website. It's massce.com/dighton. And essentially, that site has an enrollment form that people can fill out, and usually they're able to be switched over on their next meter read.
Related to that, if I may, Mr. Chairman? So this is obviously a significant hike, or I shouldn't say hike, excuse me. There's a significant difference in 2022 versus what a rate, if you're not part of the aggregation program, for NAC Grid would be versus being part of the aggregation program. So I guess my question is, when does a resident have to enroll in the aggregation program by to get that good rate?
Well, the rates for the aggregation are fixed. They're the same rates fixed through the meter read in December 2023. So it's not a special rate, there's no time limit on that rate. They can come into the program anytime.
Thank you. And just a note for our team, if we could put that information on our website. So people can decide if they want to enroll. And my last, I had a last question, but I didn't write it out, so.
Oh, good. So there's been, I've received mailings as well as phone calls trying to get us to sign up with something else. Has that been happening to others? We haven't fallen for it, but some people may have fallen for it. What happens if somebody falls for that? They can't, they're out of this, they can't get back in? Is that my understanding?
They can get back in. Yes.
It's very important that people pay attention to what they receive.
Right. Unfortunately, there are a lot of companies that will call you or will send you something in the mail. You have to be very careful about those offers. Some of them are legitimate, some of them are not. And some of them carry a very high early termination fee with them that's usually not explained at the time, and, but people find that out later. And unfortunately, a lot of these companies prey on older residents, and, you know, the standard, the standard tact that they use, they have somebody with a very pleasing voice call up and say, "Wow, we think you can qualify for this discounted price. All we need to know is your account number to check to see if you qualify." Well, you never give out your account number to somebody who calls you up on the phone because you can get switched, because they have your account number, and you're not going to know it until you get bills that are a lot more than they should be. Okay? So you never give out your account number on the phone to anybody who calls up because, again, once they get your account number, they're not going to call you back because they have what they need. Okay? So that's, that's, that's the biggest ploy they use, and it's something that residents, unfortunately, again, when confronted by somebody with a very pleasant voice that's going to help them to get a lower rate, some, some people fall for that. But essentially, you know, our, our aggregations, if people get out, they can come back in. You know, we have no, no restrictions on that at all. Okay? And certainly, if, if you find anyone who is on a rate that they shouldn't be on, you have my card, they can call my cell phone, I will help them with that.
Yesterday, we got a phone call saying that we've overcharged our electric bill, hit one, which I didn't do, but I'm sure that, at that point, they would have asked for my account number, which is amazing if they overcharged me, they should have my account number.
Yes. Yeah, well, you know, sometimes they say, "Oh, we just want to verify that we have the right information." You know, again, that, that's another way of, of doing it.
Are there any? Selectmen, hold.
In regards to the mechanism for you to provide a lower rate, is it just the sheer number of communities and homes that are bought in? What?
Well, certainly, certainly that's part of it. You know, obviously, the larger the aggregation, the better rate we can get. The biggest part of that is the fact that good energy is not only, we're not only in the aggregation business, but we're also in a large commercial industrial business. So we have, our analysts are in the market every day. Okay? For instance, in this last renewal, we went out to bid for the renewal nine months ahead of the date that it would switch over because our analysts said to us, "Hey, this is a good time to go out." Now, we have a big advantage because the utilities can only go out at very specific times of the year, two times of the year, at a very specific time, whether the market is good or not. Okay? So we have the advantage that we can do this when the market's good, the utilities, and obviously, this time, National Grid did, did not do well with their bid. Okay? Because of the way the natural gas market was spiking.
Following up on that, you're making a presentation to the, to the residents. Do you have a commercial division that actually consults incoming or potential businesses that may want to come into Dayton that will need to buy power?
Most of, most of your larger businesses already have, they've chosen a third-party supplier. It's usually the smaller businesses that haven't, and I'm sure there are many of those in Dayton who are on the aggregation. But normally, I guess it's between ninety and ninety-five percent of your larger businesses have already gotten a bid from larger, from, from suppliers. Okay? We would certainly, if a business came to us and said, "Hey, could you bid this for us?", we would do that. But we don't go after that business because that's, that's usually the, the venue of other brokers.
Are there any other questions?
I do, sorry. My final question is, if I understand the maximum enrollment number to mean that that's the maximum number of people that the program would allow in, why is there a maximum number?
No, I'm just saying that's the maximum that have, are in, are enrolled in the program.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, I'm just giving you, I'm just giving you the range of.
That makes sense. So all households theoretically could be part of.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Perfect.
Any, any, any residents or businesses within the geographical boundaries of Dayton can be in this program.
Thank you.
Okay?
Any other questions? If not, I want to thank you for coming and presenting this to the.
Gentlemen, thank you again. It's great to see you in person. Again, finally. Good to see you, Michael. Good to see you, Karen. Again, finally.
Appreciate it.
Have a good. Have a good night.
You too. Nice to see you, Mr. O'Rourke.
Public input. Anybody wish to speak?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Ray Hague. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Dayton. And I appear before you this evening, um, to speak about a Veterans Breakfast we're planning to have on November 6th at, um, Father's House Family Church located at 207 Main Street in Dayton between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM. And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you to join us. And, um, we are sending out invitations to all, uh, veterans that are residents of Dayton, Dayton, and asking them to RSVP so we can get a count on what we plan on doing that day. Veterans Day is really to thank our veterans and our living veterans and, uh, tell stories about what we did as veterans. And, uh, we hope to have a, a good turnout. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, hope to see you there.
And family members are, uh, also.
Yeah, I, I would say so. I mean, you'd want to come.
Yes.
Yeah, I went to one, uh, breakfast here in Dayton and, uh, there were family members that went. So we can accommodate that. So when they notify us, they just tell us who's coming and hopefully we'll, uh, have enough food. No, we will. We'll, we'll make sure we do.
We have about what, 425 roughly?
I think the count as of today, it was 416. So you're close, 416 and, um, yeah, it probably stays around that, that average. Um, I have had an opportunity to look at some of the past history of veterans in Dayton and it's pretty impressive of the different services they served in and the things that they have done. So, uh, it's, uh, would be nice to thank them and see them come down.
Thank you, Mr. Hague, for everything you do.
Who is providing the, is it Alice's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Alice's will be providing. I spoke to them today. He's like everybody else. He has a lot of trouble with, you know, staff and everything, but he said he would be glad to accommodate it for us. So we'll get the job done.
No, thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Any other, uh, public input? Could you give us your name and address?
Hi, I'm Bill Moore, 1835 Smith Street. And I'd like to talk about the special speed zone that's being proposed. What I want to talk about is, you know, this speed limit change here and how are we going to determine, determine what is the correct speed limit for, for this area? And what I think is that determining a speed limit is very subjective. We all have our beliefs as to what we think the speed limit should be. I think it's, you know, 30, you think it's 40, you think it's 15, whatever. It's very subjective. But what I want us to talk about is that the Massachusetts Department of Transportation has a detailed process that takes the subjective out of it and makes it objective. They have a 21-page document. You can freely get it off of their website that clearly defines a process on how you determine a speed limit on any given area. And what this, this system is, is predicated upon is the idea that we all drive a, a safe and reasonable speed that we believe. I don't believe that anybody purposely goes driving down the road at a speed they feel that's going to cause an accident or be unsafe. We all drive at a speed that we personally believe is the correct speed. So what this, what happens then is they've developed this into a process where, that in order to set a speed limit, what you do is you, you observe what's going on in that particular area where you want to impose a speed limit. And you say, take, you know, measurements of how fast everybody's driving. So you say 100 cars go by, and, and I'm compressing, you know, 21 pages down to a, you know, a paragraph here. They basically say the 85th percentile. So basically 85 out of 100 people that drove by, how fast were they going? That's what is considered a reasonable and proper speed limit. And that is the proper way to set a speed limit on any, any street within the town. Now, uh, I believe, uh, Mallory, uh, had spoken about this before and said that that is the correct way to set the speed limit in these areas. And that if we had done a process such as this, it would not be appreciated. It would not be liked because in all likelihood, the speed limit would go up, not down. Now, uh, we're, we're imposing this special speed zone. What is the purpose of the special speeds on this? Purpose of this is supposed to be for some sort of extraordinary hazard. Something like around the corner, there's a cliff. You know, around the corner, there, there's a playground or something like that. Something that the average driver driving down the street, there's some sort of hazard that they're unaware of. So this is why we're supposed to create a special speed zone. What it is not is a loophole. It's not a loophole that says, I'm going to arbitrarily, I don't like the, the way the speed limit is, so I'm just going to set it to 20 miles per hour. That's not what this is, is designed for. And to use it as such is an abuse of this exception, a blatant abuse. This is not what this is for. And this is also, I also say this is not what people want. When I've seen on, on, I've watched on television, the vast majority of people say, 20 miles an hour, that, that's too low. That's ridiculous. Why can't it be 30 miles? Why can't it be 35? And as I said when I opened, everybody has their own opinion. But I can tell you this, universally, everyone thinks that 20 miles an hour is ridiculous. And somebody was challenged, I believe you have been challenged to try to drive down that street at 20 miles an hour? Drive down any street at 20 miles an hour. It's practically like walking. It, it, it's, it's just inappropriate speed. You know, unless you're traveling in front of a school or some other major hazard, it's not an appropriate speed for a residential road. So with that, I would just like to ask this board to please reconsider putting this issue before the town at the next election. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please identify yourself. I know who you are, but identify someone's address.
Tony Rodrick, County Street, Dayton. Uh, I'd like to know if the board has any more input on the water moratorium that's imposed on this town?
Can you speak on that?
Yes, as the liaison to the Water District. Mr. Rodrick, I did bring your question before the, um, water, um, superintendent. And because of the need for upgrades at the plant, for the need to add additional wells and because the demand is greater than the supply, the moratorium will continue. He did inform me that they are negotiating a purchase for an additional well. At that time, they will then consider removing the moratorium. But at this time, things are very fragile and unfortunately, they plan on continuing the moratorium.
We're into the 15th month of this moratorium and I don't think any progress has been made. Moratorium for two years. Are they going to extend it?
I, I will say this, straight up.
Yeah, that's what I want.
I do not oversee them. The voters in the Water District do. They are accountable to the voters in the district. If the voters are not satisfied with the progress it is going, they can take matters into their own hand come Election Day. But currently, that's where it stands. That's the reality of it. They're in a position to make a decision. They have. If you see a well come into existence or purchased, then you know that there's a good chance things are going to change and the moratorium will be lifted. Other than that, the only other way to make change, if the voters feel that the moratorium has lasted long enough, is to do it that way.
They have the option to buy water. Why aren't they buying it?
Somebody's, uh, do you know when the next meeting for the Water District is?
Yes, Thursday.
This, come Thursday?
Yes.
And what time is that?
6 o'clock. At the Water District.
What time?
6 o'clock. I won't be able to, tonight I have a meeting.
Sure. I assume they have public input also?
Yes, they do.
Okay, I'll probably see you there. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask him a question? Mr. Rodrick?
Mr. Rodrick?
Is your concern that we're going to hit month 24 and they're going to need to continue the moratorium?
Yes.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Is there any other public input? Is there anybody on Zoom for public input? Select, Mr. Graffus, will you read the announcements, please?
Yes, give me one second. The Town of Dayton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on Saturday, October 16th, 2021 at Town Hall, Lower Level, 979 Somerset Avenue.
It's at 8 o'clock.
Yep. Oh, yeah, that's not on there. At 8:00 AM. There will be a volunteer day for the Community Garden on Saturday, October 16th, 2021 at the James Briggs Community Garden at 949 Somerset Avenue.
That's at 9:00 AM.
That's at 9:00 AM, yeah. Oh, the times aren't on there. Thank you. That will be at 9:00 AM on Saturday, the volunteer day. The Dayton Police Department, in coordination with the Drug Enforcement Agency DEA, is hosting a prescription drug takeback initiative event on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021 at?
I think that's, actually, we have something here. Let me, uh, I'm not sure if we gave the hours right.
Believe it is in here, well.
See the, uh, time. I do know that, uh, it did say that you can't bring marijuana as one of the drugs to give to, uh, give to them. But any other drug, apparently. I don't see a time, I just, I think.
It might just be all day.
It might be all day.
Yeah.
Uh, they've dedicated a day for people to drop off their, uh, old and new, uh, medication.
A meeting is set to review the special town meeting warrant articles on October 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM at Old Town Hall. So here, 1111 Somerset Ave. Public is welcome and encouraged to attend. And so what that is, is the articles will be explained, um, in advance of the meeting.
So what we'll, what, tonight we're going to be voting on our recommendations for the warrant articles. We won't necessarily be getting input. We will have, if they're specific warrant articles that impact, uh, somebody has presented. For example, Mr. Woods has presented one. He will get to speak on it tonight. But this particular night is when people are going to have that opportunity to speak on the warrants pro or against or whatever. But that's not happening tonight.
Thank you. A Veterans Breakfast, uh, as our Veterans Agent, uh, Mr. Hague had said, is scheduled for 9:00 AM on Saturday, November 6th, 2021 at Father's House Family Church, 207 Main Street, Dayton, Massachusetts. Um, and then, do you mind reading the list of boards?
So we have, I want to read the list of board and committee vacancies. Cable, uh, tel- uh, Television Committee, you need one. Capital Outlet Committee needs one. Cemetery Commission needs one. Commission on Disability needs three members. Development and Industrial Committee needs two.
Actually, after the action this evening, they'll, will be full.
Okay, so scratch that. Finance Committee needs two members. Human Rights Committee needs three members. Land Use Committee needs two members. Open Space Committee needs three members. We need a Superintendent of Pest Control. And the TIP Review Board needs two members. And the Zoning Board of Appeals needs three members. So they're down to the minimum, I guess, then, three members then. Uh, Town Administrator's Report.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have a few updates that I just, um, actually want to present this evening. Excuse me, I have new glasses and they actually interfere with my mask. Uh, but, um, uh, the first, uh, thing on Wednesday, October 6th, uh, we had, uh, we had a department head meeting that I just wanted to provide a few updates, uh, to the board and to the public. Uh, the Town Accountant, um, has reestablished the process of distributing on a monthly basis, year-to-date expenditure reports, uh, like for all departments, boards and committees. Uh, this is extremely, extremely important so we always know our fiscal position on exactly where we're trending and so forth. Uh, we discussed the November 18th, 2021 deadline for all capital requests, uh, forms, uh, from departments, boards and committees, which, uh, will help us outline our priorities for the next five years in terms of what our capital plans are and how we're going to fund this and how we're going to fund those plans. Um, and these plans also includes, and we reached out uh, to the Dayton-Rohbuth Regional School District as well. Uh, like, uh, all I can have and have asked for their priorities and input as well. And that's extremely important, too. Uh, like, we als- uh, we also discussed the closeout of fiscal year 2021. And, um, as part of that process, uh, the Town Accountant, uh, and I really want to thank her for her diligence. Uh, she submitted our free crap, she submitted our free cash request to the Department of Revenue yesterday afternoon. Uh, so hopefully, knock on wood, we've been in touch with the Department of Revenue, um, on our special town meeting timeline. Uh, but I think we'll hopefully be in a really good position for that at this point. Uh, and we'll follow up with them, um, and keep the board and the FINCOM uh, updated as we go forward with that. Uh, uh, we also discussed, uh, as we go forward in the fiscal year, uh, in planning, um, in a few months for the closeout of FY '22, uh, we are going to be rolling out actually new processes for encumbrances, really, uh, really to tighten up our financial controls and processes. So we, um, uh, we have a better process with all that going forward. So I wanted to provide those updates, uh, from the department headed, from the department head meeting, and then I can move on to the grants. But is there any question on the department head meeting at all?
I don't have any, no.
Okay. Uh, in terms, um, in terms of an update on our grants, and I know Dr. Z, um, is, um, is going to present additional information um, on the grant, the $150,000 grant application we submitted last week uh, to the Mass Office of Disability, uh, for, uh, for a variety of accessibility projects outlined in the packet. Uh, uh, but, yeah, like for the last really two months, uh, three months, actually, it was a labor of love between, uh, actually Dr. Z, uh, between Parks and Commission Chairman Kevin Smith, Jonathan Gera, ADA Coordinator, Highway Superintendent Ferry, uh, and, uh, and Building Commissioner Aguilar. Uh, uh, and the level of detail that we were able to provide, uh, in our application and outlining our need, uh, I think was, uh, extremely impressive and a really good presentation that I know Dr. Z will, uh, actually outline further. Uh, but we do also, this week, uh, we have an IT grant deadline on Friday with the state to submit an IT, uh, to submit a, uh, to submit our IT grant. Uh, and we'll be working on that. I'll be working on that and finalizing that application tomorrow. Uh, we received notification last week, uh, 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 that we didn't, uh, that we did not receive the One Start Grant Portal application that we applied for in early June through the state's, uh, One Start Portal process. Uh, that grant application would have, uh, actually funded our zoning analysis um, of Route 138 and Route 44. Uh, so we'll be evaluating, uh, we'll be evaluating our options and where to go and what other grants are out there to pursue that. Uh, like, we, uh, we have an upcoming Development and Industrial Commission meeting um, on Monday night. Uh, and sh- uh, and shortly thereafter, after input from that committee, uh, we should be in line to submit our community contact best practices on that. Uh, uh, the, uh, the $118,000 Shared Streets Accessibility Project, uh, the work will begin in, um, on that in the second week of November. Uh, uh, and we'll complete all of our grant-funded projects by the end of December. Uh, and then our local projects will continue, uh, on in the spring. So that, uh, is really good news. And those, um, are the improvements on Lincoln Ave. Uh, we have improvements on Main Street. Uh, there's improvements, uh, up by Bristol Aggie as well. There's a number of them in the community, which we're really excited about. Um, and also the Briggs Street, uh, the Briggs Street to Culvert Replacement Project um, is also wrapping up. Uh, like, we believe, um, uh, I'm, I'm actually, next week, they'll be doing the paving, uh, again, the installing of the guardrails, uh, on the Culvert project there. Uh, uh, so that, so that, at that time should really be wrapping up that project as well that I just wanted to bring everyone up to speed on. Are there any question on any of the grants?
Yes.
Dr. Z?
Yes, my question is, you had said that we were, after your Development and Industrial Commission meeting, we would be ready to submit. So who's writing the narratives? And are they written?
Yes. So we have worked with UMS Boston on writing the narratives for the Financial Forecast Best Practice. And then, and I'm gonna present a proposed draft to the Industri... Oh, my God, I always get the name wrong. The Development and Industrial Commission on Monday night for their input and approval as well.
I'm sorry, so who wrote the other one?
The...
Not the financial forecasting, the one for the plan, economic plan?
Yes, I'm gonna write that and present it for feedback to the Industri... Oh, my God, I did it again. The Development and Industrial Commission on Monday night.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Select no help.
I just would like to add that at that meeting on Monday night, there will be representatives of Serpide and the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce. And their input will be deeply appreciated and, I'm sure, very helpful.
Thank you. And who is our Serpide liaison specifically for economic matters?
Yeah. I have been talking and working with Grant King.
Oh, yes.
And then, and then Elizeth Gonzalez, I believe, is her name. And I think she will be our liaison for, yeah, for the Economic Development Plan Project.
Thank you.
So, finally, I wanted to provide an update on ARPA funding. And the ARPA funding that is coming through the federal government, actually, from the federal government to the town, and from the federal government through Bristol County, also to the town. For the local dedicated funding, our allotment is a total of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And, like, in this very fairly limited uses, which I included all the Bristol County information in the packet as well. So like, in addition to the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, of which we already have, and received at the end of June, half of that, so a total of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars we have now. We expect an additional, approximately one point five million dollars to come to Dyton by way of Bristol County. And we are expecting in the next month or so, really, the county rolling out its plan. And from what I understand, they're gonna be opening up a portal where we identify our priorities and where we plan and apply for projects as well for funding. So like, at this point, in terms of our local funding, which is the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, but also our... But also our ARPA funding of one point five million dollars that's coming through the county. It's important in this... It's important at this point, especially with the work of the Capital... Of the Capital Outlay Committee happening as well, to be actually thinking and planning and identifying any projects that could fit within the restrictions of the ARPA funding requirements. So as I mentioned, like, in some cases, the... The capital request process will be helpful. We also know, for example, from the warrant articles that have been submitted of a special town meeting, that we need actually, like, updated public safety repeaters in radios in one area town as well. So like, we're already looking at the possibility of ARPA funding for that. Like, we all... And we also have major infrastructure needs as well in terms of water and sewer that we have the ability to fund from that funding as well. So like, again, I mean, over... Like, I expect, especially, as the county rolls out its plan over the next six weeks, well, like, I think a lot of this is gonna get going. And, yeah, full swing, but I just wanna give the board an update where things were now.
Does the board have any questions? If not, thank you.
I think I have one. Sorry. It's specifically... It's related to the ARPA funding.
Yes.
When you said limited uses, you had said it specifically in regards to the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, of which we already have four hundred and sixteen.
Yes, we do.
So what... Is it only water and sewer improvements? What could it be used for? And then, I guess, my second question, and you can answer however you like, is are the other remaining one point five million in funding, are there limited uses for that as well?
So like, all the funding have the... Has the same exact funding requirements. So we have the same funding requirements and the same guidelines for all of our approximately two point three million dollars that we'll be receiving, either through local funds or by way of the county as well. And I want to... And I'm trying to... As we're talking, just quickly bring up the Bristol County information. I'm trying to scroll quickly here. I apologize. Okay. So like, you'll see, like, in this... Like, a lot of this information is what we discussed with Rep. Padad in our meeting last week. However, the funding guidelines, if you will, they are outlined beginning right here. So they... So they fund public health issues, public health needs. That is, I believe, one of four or five categories. And within public health, you can see the types of things that we could fund with that, whether it's PPE, it's capital investments for public facilities that respond to COVID, which is actually what we're looking at for our public safety upgrades that I mentioned. Then, it includes... Actually, funding available to deal with the negative economic impacts of COVID. So you can see there are eligible uses for food assistance programs, for rent and mortgage, for unemployment benefits, aid to nonprofit organizations and the like. Then we have the... Then there's aid to dis... There's aid to disproportionately impacted communities, which center on education, healthy childhood environments, housing support, social determinants of health. Then we... There's a category for premium pay for employees, for public sector employees and then for private sector employees. Then there's a category for infrastructure, especially for water, stormwater, for sewage, for water conservation, energy compensation, and at the end, broadband. Then there is a revenue replacement category, which is actually pretty complicated. And there are multitude... There are a multitude of guidelines that you need to meet to fund your budget or to deal with any revenue impacts. And thankfully, we really haven't had any as a town. So that's really relevant to us. And then we... And then there are administrative expenses as well. So probably, those are the categories. We have some flexibility, but we have to live within the perimeters of what have been outlined by the federal government. And as I mentioned, the same guidelines that the... That the county is using are the same guidelines that apply to eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in local funding as well.
Select no help.
I've had some discussions with Mr. Mullen in regards to this. There's only so much funding, and as you can see, there are a great number of categories. And the Town of Dyton has a great number of needs. And I know we can't vote on it this evening, but what I would really like to see is a policy and a procedure established about grant applications to Mr. Mullen's office. One, how that will be done, deadlines and the like. Two, what groups will evaluate those requests? And I would hope that one group that is an evaluator, that helps to set priorities, is the Capital Outlay Committee. That's gonna be so important. Obviously, at some point along the line, the Board of Selectmen are gonna be giving their approval. But I would like to see a format so that all the applicants know this is the process. These are the people that are making decisions. Will it be Capital Outlay that'll make the final decision and we'll put a rubber stamp on it? Or will we give our blessing straight up, regardless of what other groups say, which I find kinda risky? But there will be a definite process. One of the things that I am well aware of over the years is that we've had some resentment because people felt it was pitting one department against another. That's why this whole idea of the Capital Outlay establishing priorities, establishing timelines, I see as wonderful. Everybody will see it straight up and know ahead of time what's coming and why. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
If not, we'll go to Old Business. Recommendations for warrant articles? Just so everybody knows, that the Finance Committee did review all the money articles. And although you may see recommendations from the Finance Committee, it's conditional on the fact that we'll see how much we get in free cash. So they didn't wanna make a commitment necessarily. They're gonna meet again, I believe it's on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Again, to see what the free cash is and then take a vote again. So whatever you see, the recommendations is conditional on seeing how much free cash we got.
Forty? Sorry, Ken, I was talking about...
Yes. So, let's begin. Article one to... And right now, it's gonna be the recommendations from the Board of Selectmen on each one. Article one to hear reports of the town officials and act thereon. I assume we don't need to make a recommendation on that one? I assume we're all in favor of that? Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds eighty dollars and ninety-three cents to pay a prior year bill. Prior year bills for the Masswood Island Veterinary ER Inc. The department is the Animal Control Officer and the funding sources is... And the amount in the funding source is eighty dollars and ninety-three cents, and it's to raise inappropriate. The Finance Committee recommends that we raise inappropriate. Any discussion on that warrant article?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds eighty dollars, ninety-three cents to pay a prior year bill.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Select no help?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds sum not to exceed three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to make the payment on the bond of the police station, to reduce the tax rate or take any other action relative thereto. And the Finance Committee recommends the transfer from free cash. We have, since I've been on the board, and I don't know if that was the first payment when I was on the board, but we've always paid this... Made this payment out of free cash, so it doesn't impact the taxes.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend transfer for free cash for this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Select no help?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Article four, just so you know, I'm not reading all the articles. We're gonna share...
Thank you. Please don't.
No, I'm not reading all of them. Meaning, I'm not gonna go through all...
Oh, oh, yeah, no.
So we're gonna share the responsibility.
Oh, okay.
Like we did... Yes.
Okay.
Especially the long articles. The towns will be page articles, you guys.
Yeah, no, that's what we did.
I get to read the coordinates, the ones with the coordinates?
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents to fund the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two personal expenses for the employee covered under the recently settled Dyton Police Officers Local three oh six, Massachusetts Coalition of Police Bargaining Agreement, or take any action relative thereto. And because it's regarding wages, the salary has to be raised and appropriate, not free cash. And the Finance Committee recommends that we do this.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend to raise and appropriate the sum as listed in Article four this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Select no help?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. I'll read, Mr. Wood, I'll read the following warrant article, and if you wish to speak on it, you can, because this is something that you had, I believe you had had a petition on this, okay? Warrant article number five, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to add the following new article, Flag Bylaw. No person shall fly or display a commemorative or organizational flag other than A, the United States flag, B, the Massachusetts state flag, C, the official Town of Dyton flag, D, the official flags of all branches of the US Military and Armed Forces, N, or E, the POW MIA flag on a town flagpole or any other such manner located at the town hall or town-owned land or town-maintained facilities. Article five, to amend the general bylaws, was submitted via residential petition. Do you want to come to the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank the two hundred and sixteen residents that signed the petition to move this forward. I think it's very important that they all show up on November first and vote yes on Article five. Thank you very much.
And they can also, if you wish to discuss it, be here on October twenty-fifth. We have the public here, and so anybody who wants to speak on that also can speak on it.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion.
So I don't think the board recommends or makes recommendations on articles that were petitions. At least, they haven't since I've been here.
Yeah, I think since I've been here, this is the first time I've seen an article that's petitioned.
I think it's something that started from the residents and should be decided by them.
Well, it's gonna be decided by them, obviously. We won't take a vote then on Article five. Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-one cents to additionally fund account number zero one zero dash zero dash five one zero dash zero 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 dash fifty dash five one zero six, personal expenses, salary, health agent, due to a proposed increase in wages from thirty-seven oh four an hour to thirty-eight eighty-six an hour, and increase in and increase in work hours from twenty-eight to thirty-five hours for the remainder of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Chairman, the Board of Health, will you wish to speak on this before we take a vote?
I don't think there's a whole lot more I can say about the need for additional hours in the health department. If you happen to be over there and see what's going on during the day, the volume of work speaks for itself about the need for additional hours. But just as an example, I have a... A study we did within Bristol County for both hours and wages. Now, of the... About nine here, it looks like that we did all of the communities, and I'll read them off. Dyton, Free Town, Acushnet, Rho, with Rainham, Seafunk, Swansea, Somerset. They all have a thirty-five hour health agent. I guess they get it, the need for a number of hours in each one. And I also have the one that Rockland did, I think, that Aldi Board received. On this one, there are forty-four cities and towns. Some are well over twenty thousand, several are under ten thousand, as is the Town of Dyton. Of the forty-four cities and towns, thirty-nine of them work thirty-five hours or more. And if you have your sheet, you'll see that. So I don't think there's a lot more I can say about the number of hours. I see what goes on there daily, for the most part, and they're almost every day. Is it a little busy now due to COVID, certainly? But I don't see us progressing even without COVID for twenty-eight hours. As far as wages go, the average wage in FY twenty-two on this report from Rockland was eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is the going rate for health agents these days. If you do any investigating, you'll find that health agents are leaving positions and go, going to other places and they're pulling anywhere between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars. So that's that one. We did the one I mentioned before for Bristol County. Wage for a health agent is the second lowest within those numbers in Bristol County. And it will be the second lowest after an increase. So, you know, I would hate to see the town have to spend more fi-, more money than it needs to spend because we've let a good health agent go. Especially with the skills that he has, I believe there's a lot of potential savings in the town going forward. Hopefully, we'll finally get a contract done with job descriptions and duties. And I think that would be helpful for the agent and helpful for the town so we can identify exactly what we're doing. Did a little, I'm not an accountant, but I think I got it right as far as the increase in wages. Right now, it's fifty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That's what else stipends. The new price would be seventy-one thousand, sixty-five dollars and change. That's an increase of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Of that sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, fourteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, if I figured it right, is due to an increase in hours at the new rate of thirty-eight eighty-six. Two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars would be the increase in wages at the new rate and the, and the new number of hours. So the majority of the increase we're looking at is geared toward increasing hours and not wages. I think we, yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify, when you, so the numbers don't match up. So for people watching that don't understand where that sixteen thousand number came from, that's for a full fiscal year. The article here, okay, so just, there were some confused faces, yes. So I just wanted people to understand. I was confused too, and then I did some quick math.
I have a longer version of a presentation I haven't quite completed yet that will outline the duties and responsibilities when we separated from the Board of Selectmen and what's happened with our staffing and what's happened with our workload that was taken from the Board of Selectmen. You know, we seem to be the only department at this time that has not increased any staff at all or increased hours. And that was four years ago when we split. There's been issues, yes. I think an increase in hours could probably, or will probably, eliminate a lot of those issues we've had to encounter. So that's all I've got for now.
As I've said consistently, and I'm saying this as someone who has some goals in regards to fiscal responsibility and good planning, I've heard this evening that we need to work out a contract. We need to work out a job description. I attended a Finance Committee meeting, and you know, at this point in time, there is no recommendation by FinCom on this issue because they have several unanswered questions. One of the things that I have learned, that it is highly unusual in Dayton's history for any employee in the fall town meeting to get this significant of an increase in wages. I would highly recommend that we sit down, work this out, come up with a job description, and then come back for the annual town meeting with a proposal that is clear that we not make it up as we go along. Because apparently, I have some questions as someone who's also worked in the healthcare field for thirty-five years. We currently have a health agent whose background is engineering. He's a certified engineer. Yet, he is advising registered nurses, and soon, I believe, we're going to be hiring a registered nurse that will be under his supervision. He also advises healthcare professionals, some of which work at the company that I work for in the town of Dayton. So I am well aware of their background, their expertise. And I question whether or not, and this is not a reflection on the individual, but it's on the credibility and the transparency on what is portrayed to people on the outside looking in. I would like to see a reorganization. I would like to see some effort put into what our needs are as far as engineering. I'll refer back to something, and I spoke to Mr. Ryan's on this Saturday, a proposal that he had made many years ago. How much validity that has, since the Bill of the Planning Board does have an engineer. And in regards to the Board of Health, a job description. We've had, as Mr. Pilling has said, we've had the health agent pulled in many, many different directions. We had a crisis in Stormwater involving a project in town, and he got pulled away from his duties there to deal with that. That makes it difficult for him, in fairness to that health agent, but it also makes it difficult for the town. So that's how I stand on that proposal, and I will be voting against this article. Thank you.
For two years, we've talked about a contract, or some type of agreement with Mr. Pilling. For two years, nothing was done. As much as we wanted it to get done, it just never happened. And as far as him being an engineer, fifty percent, I would say, of the town's needs are within Title V, which he is highly qualified to do. As far as nursing, he's been guiding the nurses on COVID rules and regulations and procedures. I would challenge you, Selectman Hull, to call the nurses and see how much in need they are of Mr. Pilling. He's been spot-on and up-to-date on all his facts regarding COVID. So, you know, to say he's an engineer and that's it, that's not so. He does a lot more things. We do food inspections, we do housing inspections, we watch West Nile, we watch Triple E. We get involved in everything. Everything that happens in the town goes to the Board of Health. So, you know, I'm not going to sit here and continue because I know where you stand. So I'm done answering questions. And however the Board feels, so be it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make just a couple statements. So I was also at the Finance Committee meeting, and I just wanted, I know you weren't there, so I don't, I'm not going to assume you watched the meeting, but just.
I didn't know I was going to have a meeting.
Yeah, no, understood.
We didn't notify.
Understood.
I don't believe any, especially, I don't believe any department has been notified, but there will be another meeting on October twenty-eighth.
And that's why there wasn't any response from me.
Yeah. Understood. But I just wanted you to know, if you hadn't watched the meeting, that their main concern was actually just the wording of the article and specifically how it only first alluded the, I just want to be clear. The language you're seeing here tonight is, has been amended. What the Finance Committee considered was an article that only alluded to salary, when in reality, as you said tonight, the bulk of the increase is hours. And I just wanted to let the public be aware. I was fortunate enough to go on a perk test with you, Chairman Pires, and with Health Agent Pilling. The issue of why the hours are needed is because of the balance, or imbalance right now, between the field work and the office work. A perk test can take, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm certainly not an expert, but I was told that a perk test can take anywhere from two to four hours. So if Mr. Pilling, who works twenty-eight hours right now, has, I think you told me, three to four a week?
Well, we had sixteen.
And it range, ranges. Okay. So if there's four, you know, just giving an average, sixteen divided by four weeks in a month is four a week. Four times four is sixteen. So just so everyone is aware, when that happens, sixteen out of his twenty-eight hours are spent in the field, and then everything else that he's asked to do, he has to finish in the twelve hours, is that correct?
Yeah, but I wouldn't really say that four is the average. You may get a six-hour one, but on the average, I would say they're two hours.
Okay.
Maybe a little more, but on the average, two. Would you agree, Mr. Rudd?
These are the experts, so I trust them. So that, so I just want everyone to understand that that's where the bulk of the request is coming from. So it's hours, not salary. I have had the pleasure, or not, I guess it's a pleasure, of sitting down there with them, seeing how they work for different things. I think we were working on a grant together at the time. But they're busy and they didn't, they don't, they don't really stop down there. So I'm happy to support it. I know it's needed. It is something that you have been requesting for quite some time. The timing didn't work. And I also wanted to allude to something else that had been brought up earlier tonight. Selectman Hull, you're absolutely right that Finance Committee, since Chairman Swartz was on the committee, which was a very long time, has had a policy of not bringing these to a special town meeting because it's not fully funding a full fiscal year. And so there's a little bit of confusion on what the total is. I did tell them, just so you know, Chairman Pires, I explained the situation, and I just said, this is why it's on the warrant for the special town meeting. And so it was explained, and they said there was no hard feelings.
We agreed to in the, for the annual town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, we were supposed to go forward.
Correct. And that is what I, that's exactly what I told them.
We had to cut, was, I think, like a half a million dollars from the budget?
Correct.
So this was one of those.
He asked me to hold off to the fall, that's why we're coming to the fall meeting. I'm sorry.
No, no, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Pires.
With respect for you, Mr. Pires.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve, excuse me, that we recommend Article six. Mr. Mullin, actually, I'm going to retract that. Do you remember from our conversation with Finance Committee, if they had mentioned at all, if they were going to fund this, where it should come from?
Raise and appropriate because it was an operational expense.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you're entertaining motions, I motion that we recommend Article six with the funding source is to raise and appropriate as prepared this evening.
I'll step down and second that motion. Any further discussion? I'll ask for a vote, Selectman Hull?
No.
Selectman Segraffas?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Majority of the Board of Selectmen recommend. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the amount of ten thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to reimburse the sewer enterprise fund for the unused fiscal year twenty-one employee health insurance premiums budgeted and paid to the town of Dayton or take any other action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends no action. Further review is needed. So they're seeking, if I remember correctly from the Finance Committee meeting, some further information. So I'm not sure if we're prepared to vote on this. Ask my colleagues, how do you feel about that?
My instinct would be to just defer, as the Finance Committee did, until we have more information. If we have more information, I'm happy to hear it, by the way.
I totally agree with Selectman Segraffas.
We won't be taking a vote on Article seven.
Mr., can I make a motion and recommend specifically no action, as they did? Okay, just so we're all in, in sync. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends no action and further review of Article seven.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segraffas?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to reappropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars from special article account number zero-one-zero dash one dash two forty-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero dash twenty-one dash five-eight-five-zero inspectional vehicle initially approved for the purchase and lettering of a twenty-twenty Ford Escort hybrid vehicle in Article eleven of the special town meeting of November sixteen, twenty-twenty, and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer a sum of ten thousand dollars from available funds for the total sum of forty thousand dollars to be expended by the billing commissioner to purchase and letter one hybrid vehicle to be used for the inspectional services or take any action relative thereof. The reason why the Finance Committee hasn't acted on this is because they didn't like the wording of the article, if you remember. It was specific, unfortunately, it was specific when we voted on this a year ago that we said it was going to be a Ford Escape hybrid vehicle. They're unavailable, if I remember correctly. So it was specific for that, so now they want it to be a little bit more vague as to what we get. It is going to be a hybrid, it's my understanding, but it won't necessarily be a Ford Escort hybrid.
Procedurally?
Yes.
Do we, is it too late to amend and change the wording?
So that's a good question, yes. So based on the FinCom discussion on Thursday night, we have already amended the language to include the description of the vehicle approved last year. I like, originally, when we outlined what was in the special town meeting article from November twenty-twenty, we didn't actually have the words twenty-twenty Ford Escape hybrid vehicle. We just had vehicle, so we added that in there. We have also checked with counsel as, as to the intent of the article, like, and what it intends to do, and counsel has approved it. Like, as of yesterday afternoon. So, yeah, that has all happened. So this is the updated final language based on the FinCom discussion Thursday night.
So we couldn't amend this to clean up the language so it'll appear on the ballot?
That's already happened.
It had, yeah, this is the cleaned up language.
Yeah, that's been cleaned up.
So this is the amended?
Correct. Based on what they said, it had to be two parts.
Checking with legal counsel.
Yes, we covered all of our bases there, and yes, this is legal, it makes sense.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Administrator, so I just want to be clear. Counsel has seen this specific language?
Yes.
As prepared this evening and is comfortable with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no further.
I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, actually, I'm going to rescind that. What will be the funding sources for both parts?
So the funding?
Or just for the second part?
Free cash.
Okay.
And then the thirty thousand is the reappropriation.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends Article eight specifically for the sum of ten thousand dollars should be taken from free cash, and the thirty thousand dollars will be re-appropriated from special article. from Special Article as prepared this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segraffas?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $13,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the purchase and installation of one high-efficiency HVAC unit at Town Hall or take any other action relative thereto. And the Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash. So the, so that the public knows, last year we purchased two. Our HVAC equipment is 40 years old, the billings, actually, 42 years old. We had the purchase two, they failed last year, and this is the third one that we, that has failed. This is the, if you go on the bill, it's the front offices of the upper floor. So that's why we need it. It has failed. We've had units put into these offices for the summer because of the air conditioning. I understand that the heat works.
Yes.
So we will be able to have heat, so there's no immediate need to do it, but this is the time to replace it, in that-
We're lucky he survived the summer.
We don't need the air conditioner right now, so let's, let's put it in, and then-
Sure.
Selectmen Hall?
I just would like to make a motion, that's appropriate at this time? Make a motion, the Board of Selectmen recommend that the town vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $13,000, to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the purchase and installation of one high-efficiency HVAC unit at Town Hall, or to take any other action relative thereto.
I'm going to second that.
The Finance Committee recommends the transfer of free cash.
Yes, can we amend that? Specifically to say, from free cash?
Can we amend at this point?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, when Selectmen Hall read it, he said, well, that we vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds. So I'm saying, can we, can we, can we change your motion? I'm sorry, it should have been more clear.
To transfer-
To transfer from free cash. Are you okay with that?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm going to second that as well.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I actually have two very quick questions. First, my question is, why does it have to be expended by the Board of Selectmen if the building commissioner is doing the installation? Or helping with it? Oversea it?
That is a, you know, that is a good question. It could be the building commission, if the board so desires. I don't see a problem with that.
I guess, I'm wondering if there's a reason why it specifically says the Board of Selectmen?
I just assumed they would be paying the bill.
Okay. Are we, well, but we, this doesn't bind us in any way, like, we're, I'm not, I'm going to have to do the work, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the record, we cannot pay the bill.
Correct. And my, I just wanted the public to know, for this specific HVAC unit, this, transferring from free cash and asking taxpayers to assist in the payment of this was not the first choice. We tried two different, looking at two different grant sources. We first tried with green communities, and they said no, and I think that was actually when the first two units originally broke. And then we also, thanks to our town administrator, looked into CARES funding as well, and that's not possible either. So I just want people to know that the first option was not to ask you to fund it.
I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segraffas?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $15,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to purchase a cybersecurity insurance policy, and all necessary equipment and accessories to establish a secure two-factor authentication process for town employees, or take any other action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends to raise and appropriate $10,000 and transfer from free cash $5,000.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends to, votes to recommend this, to raise and appropriate $10,000 and to transfer from free cash $5,000 as prepared this evening.
Second.
Just so the public knows, this is, a lot of towns in the area have this cybersecurity insurance policy, and we just want to make sure that we have it also. It's very important that, because of malware and all that kind of ransomware-
And the ransom, when they, when you have to pay the Bitcoin, and so that we, towns in this area have actually been victim to it. So the ransom is expensive, too. So I know $15,000, correct? Correct. So I know $15,000 is, you know, nothing to scoff at, but when you're a victim, you can also be a victim more than once, too, and it adds up.
Any other questions? I'll entertain, do we already?
I think we motioned, yeah.
Did we second it?
And we seconded it.
Yes.
Yep.
I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segraffas?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye. I'm going to ask one of my colleagues to read the next two pages of warrants, Article 11 through Article 23.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay, do you care if I do the next, I mean, it doesn't really matter?
You guys can fight over it.
Okay.
Do you want to do the next page, and I'll do 16 or 23?
Sure. Article 11, to see if the-
Also, I get to do two, and you guys do the other one.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum not to exceed $40,000, and just so everyone knows, town administrator's recommendation is $30,000, to be expended by the Dighton Trails Committee to fund a feasibility study to provide viable options and initial concepts to connect the future two-mile DCR Sweet Snoll Trail to the north and south with on-road and off-road trail options, to connect the town of Dighton to the Taunton River Trails Network, north across the Three-Mile River to Taunton, and south along the waterfront to Somerset, or take any action relative thereto. And just so everyone is aware, the reason why there is not a recommendation on this article is, just like you weren't there, the Trails Committee also was not at the Finance Committee meeting, and so I think the Finance Committee had questions about the project. Mr. Cavalo. The chairman.
Mr. Cavalo, do you wish to speak on this warrant?
Yes, thank you. Jeff Cavalo, 2124 Thomas Way, and also Chair of Trails Committee, and Karen Allen, one of the members, is also present here. So I presented this over the summer, and we initially had this on the annual town meeting, and we were asked to push it off to the, this fall special. But the gist is, the Department of Conservation and Recreation is, has been awarded the design and engineering funding to put in a two-mile section of rail trail in the heart of the town of Dighton. The south end point of it is on Somerset Avenue, behind Allison's last stop, and the north end of it is, and I always forget the name of that road, I'm sorry, two miles north of it is San Piper Way, is in the vicinity of where it ends at the north end of it. So what we want to do is, we're seeing this beautiful concept that the Department of Conservation and Recreation wants to put in the middle of our town, and we want to do our due diligence to see what the best approaches are, best concepts would be to tie in that two-mile section, first of all, from the north into, into Taunton, because we'd like to go across the Three-Mile River to tie it into the Taunton River Trails Network. And then we also want to see what we can do on the south end of it, when it comes out on Somerset Avenue. And in both of those situations, there are some viable, potentially viable on-road and off-road options. So in order to do that kind of work, we need to, we need to put in for grants, and in talking to Serpent and Bill of Panatano and, and that group, the recommendation was to, you know, step number one, was to look if we could fund a feasibility study. So what we have before you here in this article is really step one. So we want to put in a feasibility study, have an engineering firm come in and, and do a thorough look-through on what the options are on the north and south sections here. And then, then we'll have something, something viable, or something, something concrete when we go forward for grants. We're not just a bunch of volunteers from the town of Dighton who have a really great idea, we're a bunch of volunteers from the town of Dighton who have evidence on what the viable options are, because an engineering firm has gone through and looked at it, and we have supporting documentation. So that's, that's the point of this year.
Can you let us know why the original figure was $30,000, and now there's a recommendation of $40,000?
Right, so initially, when we put in the original request back in June, we were using a 18-month-old figure, which was a ROM we got from an engineering firm that said it would be about 30K to do that kind of work. After talking with our, with our group and our, and our board, we thought maybe it'd be wise to expect something in the mid-30s, with the last 18 to 24 months that have passed since our initial swag that we got from, from the engineering firm. So this is just additional padding to, just in case it comes in a little higher, so that we're not having to come back and then go through this process again.
Mr. Cavalo, this grant application, if this were to fail this year, could you reapply for this grant next year?
There is no grant right now. This is step one, to get the information to, and the documentations that we can apply for grants. If we don't get this funding this year, or in, at the special town meeting, I suppose our alternative option would be to, to go back and, and either potentially, worst-case scenario is, is go to the next, in the town meeting for the next cycle, or go to alternate funding in town, which we've, we've tried in the past, but have not succeeded, and that's, that's why we're here today.
Dr. Z, I think you have a plan to take.
I don't mind, but it's actually related to what you had just asked. So if I'm understanding this correctly, it's sort of like where we're at with the sewer project. You have to prove to the grants awarding agency that you have a feasible or viable plan, right? Before they will award you any money, obviously, to do it.
Yes, sir.
And then my other question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is Finance Committee, and I certainly don't want to speak for anyone, but Finance Committee did have a question about whether or not this plan, or this idea, involves Broad Cove Nature Trail, and the reason is because it's not all, there's an entryway that's not owned by the town. So I didn't want to answer, I was not privy to that information, so I did want to ask you that as well.
We don't, we, we're trying to keep the, the scope of the feasibility studies open as possible. We don't specifically expect high-end with the Broad Cove Nature Trail, but knowing that the Broad Cove Nature Trail is, is, you know, just to the south of where the Somerset Avenue, and then going down Pleasant Street, I, I would expect that the feasibility study would come back and say, you know, sticking to on-road section there on Pleasant would be the most viable option, knowing that as you're going along south on Pleasant, you've also got Broad Cove Nature Trail to the, to the west. So everything's open at this point, there's, there's nothing solid on what the plan is moving forward. These are just concepts and, and feasible designs that are going to be assembled.
Thank you.
Yes, I think you should attend, if you can, the Finance Committee meeting on October 28th. What time is that? I don't remember. We'll post-
They usually do six.
Six.
Yeah.
I thought it was early at the last time. You probably should attend that meeting, so you can explain to the Finance Committee what your concerns are, and why you're going forward with this warrant.
Sure, and that's on the 28th, you said?
It's 28th, and I'm not sure exactly the time, we believe it's 6 o'clock, but I'm not sure.
So we'll follow up with you, Jeff, as well.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to ask about the meeting on the, on the 25th. I know when we, we spoke over the summary, you said it'd be a good idea for me to attend and present.
Yes, I've asked that you attend that meeting also, so the public can hear what you're telling us now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Selectmen Hall?
What I'm about to say is in reference to many of the issues that are going to come up, and will help explain when I vote. No. When I came on this board, there were some things that the people in the community had said. They were concerned about the tax rate, and they were concerned about the needs. And since I've been a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've added an additional concern, and that is sound planning. Some of my goals is a minimum of a 10% capital stabilization account. Until then, I'm going to be fiscally conservative. Another goal that I would like to see the town have is a 5% minimum in its stabilization account, based on its budget. I'd also like to see, and they're working on it, and I'm excited about the work that the Capital Outlay Planning Committee will do, but I want to see a plan. And also, when groups come before this board looking for money, they have a plan, not hopes, while we might find a grant, while we might do this, we have a definitive plan. Speaking specifically about the Trails Committee, there are a lot of uncertainties, and one of the biggest concerns that is being negotiated right now is if there's going to be a major block impediment to the completion of this trail. That's an uncertainty. We don't even know if we're going to be able to finish this trail. So to do a feasibility study when that issue hasn't been resolved, I have concerns, and I can't support it this time. I also have another concern. This proposal came before the CPC, and that body is an independent party. They receive funding somewhat from the taxpayers, but they also receive private funding, and they too had some concerns. I am not against this project down the road, but at this time, because of the uncertainty, because some of these goals that I've just mentioned haven't been met, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I? So as you know, Selectmen Hall, I always respect everyone's opinion, but I did just want to add one thing. To your point about sometimes there are unknowns, and specifically with Broad Cove Nature Trail, and we all know the history, so I, I share those concerns with you, so I just want to be very upfront about that. But the reason I'm going to support this is because I think the point of the feasibility study is, knowing that that's not, may not be possible, that entrance route or access point, I'd be interested in seeing what the feasibility study determines in terms of what is actually possible with the given routes. So I'd be interested to see what it comes up with. And the other point is, I, and I totally agree and respect your opinions regarding planning. I would hope that if something like this were to pass at a town meeting, that there would be some kind of a plan put together by the Trails Committee, and I'm just using you as an example, because that's what we're talking about right now, with a list of things like possible grants, deadlines for applications, like, I agree, there need to be more specific. So I, I just wanted to say my point about the feasibility study and how that's the point, but I do share a lot of your questions and concerns as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Cavalo, I do support this project, but I would prefer, if it's okay with my colleagues, that we wait to make a decision on this, till we hear back from the Finance Committee and see what that discussion is between the Trails Committee and the Finance Committee. And also, it's unclear to me, if they do support it, where they would want to, what they would want to use, excuse me, as a funding source, so I would not be prepared to vote on this, this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I would second his motion, if you-
To not vote? To take it under advisement?
We can table it.
Yes, we can.
There's no motion. We'll, when we meet with the FinCom, we'll have this conversation, and we can actually, because it's a Board of Selectmen's meeting also, we can make a motion at that point.
Mr. Cavalo?
Yes, sir.
I know you're very busy, you work full-time, I totally respect that. Maybe it might be not the worst idea, if I may, to task members of your committee with doing a little bit of that research on things like what possible funding sources could be, so we can start to fill in those blanks, and I think it might go a long way to garnering some public support as well.
Okay, you mean from, if we do get the feasibility study for-
Correct.
For grant funding, and what, what the next steps are?
Correct.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you.
We have a meeting tomorrow, so that works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalo.
Thank you, sir. Miss, oh, sorry. Sorry. Excuse me, Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, excuse me, yes, I was just reading it, and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $225,000 to be expended by the police and fire departments in the built, in the build-out of a two-site public safety-rated repeater system, new portable radios, and any necessary equipment relative thereto, or take any action relative thereto. And the Finance Committee has no recommendation on this, Mr. Chairman.
This question is for Mr. Mullin. This question is for Mr. Mullen. My understanding of state and federal fundings, APPA in particular.
Yes.
Sewer, water, broadband, correct?
And public health and safety, yes.
With that in mind, is this reimbursable? If the town approved it, could we still apply for that and reimburse this?
So what I'm actually hoping, as we go forward in our APPA planning process, that this really could be an item in working with the Capital Outlay Committee, that we could fund through our APPA funding.
Okay. So with that, okay, so with that in mind, if we didn't appropriate this, some of the goals that I mentioned earlier, could this money could go in to help working towards that stabilization goal in the capital?
So yeah, through funding, through funding this priority from another source like APPA, oh, yes, oh, yeah, like it would allow us to, oh, yeah, like actually not have to use free cash, like already local funding to pay for this priority. So I do expect, like as we begin to develop our APPA plan, like I really want to look at that priority through capital outlay planning, but through APPA planning as well.
So what does the board want to do on this?
Can I ask you a que, I cannot recall why Finance Committee did not have a recommendation on this specific article.
Did they want to hear from the police and fire?
So I had explained the same thing to FINCOM, that it was our hope, like I actually, in my spreadsheet, like I did actually outline that I recommended to defer, I meant to explore APPA funding to fund this priority.
And this, that doesn't impede anything that those two departments may be doing or need to do using the older technology?
No.
Okay.
No, they can still use the older technology.
Yeah, of course.
Would allow them to operate it.
Okay. And there's no...
So there's a real need for it, but if we have the ability to fund it, like ideally through APPA funding, like we don't have to draw on our free cash or capital stabilization at a time we're trying to build that up, that would be ideal. But again, there's a need for it. But hopefully, as we come together, like in the next six, in the next six weeks to develop a plan for our APPA funding, like as I mentioned, this is one thing that, like I hope in the very short term we'll be able to do, utilizing our APPA funding.
So no more by the annual town meeting, obviously, then, whether or not we're going to get the APPA funds for this, so we probably address this at the annual town meeting?
It's probably not in line for the annual town meeting because we're waiting for the Bristol County APPA process to roll out. Like, based on what I heard from someone today, I don't think it's actually going to roll out before town meeting, but I am fairly cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to include this in our APPA funding plan.
So can I assume the board does not want to make a recommendation also on this?
Yeah, I have more, yeah. I'm comfortable with not making a recommendation.
Same.
And I'd also be interested, you know how State Representative Pat Haddad routinely gets these, I don't want to call them small because it makes it sound like it's not important, but she gets these smaller grants for things like the fire department for various different safety equipment and things. There's not anything like that for these specific items?
So, like from my understanding, the local funding that she typically brings back, with support from the Bristol County Fire Chiefs, is for like a regional network, like and what, and what we're talking about here in this priority, oh, yeah, like as local repeaters, like in radio upgrades where we know we already have questions with our service.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank, I have no further questions. We're not going to make, we're just not going to, we'll skip it, okay? Article 13, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $150,000 for engineering and design services for the Pleasant Street Bridge Reconstruction Project, or take any other action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash."
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Could you speak on the condition and the safety concerns of that bridge?
Yes. So, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the bridge, as many folks know, was constructed in 1914. So the bridge itself is about 107 years old. It is a posted bridge, so like it does have a lower capacity in terms of weight limitations on it. From what I understand, in about 2018, 2019, the Board of Selectmen in the town, through the efforts and work of the Pride Town Administrator and the Highway Superintendent, had gone out and had an engineering analysis that was conducted on the bridge. And the, and the analysis recommended either a full bridge replacement, or the replacement of a, or the replacement of the bridge superstructure. We, and through the leadership of Highway Superintendent Ferry, like we've been working with the Mass Department of Transportation, at that time and since then, we even met with them at the site of the Pleasant Street Muddy Cove Bridge about two weeks ago. And like, and the bridge is still relatively structurally the same as it was in 2019, but like, as I mentioned, there, we do have infrastructure safety challenges with the bridge. Like, as I mentioned, it is a posted bridge, so it's, so it's weight, so it's weight limitations, you know, have been decreased from what they originally were.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Selectman Hall.
Would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Ferry a question?
Oh, he can probably speak to it better than I could, yes.
Mr. Ferry, in your professional judgment, can we wait for the possibility of grant funding, or is this a project that needs our immediate attention? Thank you.
So we need to do the engineering work to apply for a grant?
Yeah, yeah, we need, yes. So if I could, Mr. Chairman, one of the things, in the one-stop grant application process, we, that I mentioned that we worked on, in the early summer, we had, we had, we had actually considered applying through the state's rural program for grant funding to actually fund the replacement of the bridge. However, because we didn't have the engineering done, we had to do a hard stop, and we couldn't even do anything. So yes, actually, funding the engineering, like very much, very much puts it in line for state and federal funding for this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion if that's appropriate.
I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. Ferry.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of money not to exceed $150,000 for engineering and design services for the Pleasant Street Bridge Reconstruction Project.
I'm going to second that.
Any discussion?
No, I just wanted to thank everyone for, especially Mr. Ferry, for keeping this on our radar and, you know, it needs to be done. So we need to make progress on it. And like any infrastructure project, it sounds like you kind of have to show whoever the grant awarding agency is, that you can complete the project in a certain amount of time, or they won't give you the funds. So happy to second that.
I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hall.
Aye.
Dr. Sografis.
Aye.
The time is at eight o'clock, it feels like 10. By the way, we're going to be out of here by 10.
Nine.
I know you want to stay long, everybody, but we're going to be out of here by 10. And you already voted aye?
Aye.
And Kim Bichigo was an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next article, Article 14.
"To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds in amount not to exceed $30,000 for planning and permitting costs to redesign the driveway and traffic pattern and add a maintenance facility at Dayton Elementary School/Dayton Middle School, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends a transfer from free cash."
So we've already, the townspeople have already appropriated some funds for this.
Eighty-five thousand.
Yes, eighty-five thousand last November.
We need additional money because they've discovered wetlands, I guess, but configuration may be a little different. And this is at the request of residents in town who have children, students at the elementary and middle school.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, the maintenance facility part, which is specifically outlined in here, was a specific request from the school district.
Yes. Selectman Hall wasn't present at that meeting, but you and I were, and they made that request. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, if you have...
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
Capital Outlay, all applications are due in by October, was it November?
November 18th.
Oh, so it'll be after the meetings. Okay.
Yeah, that, that's why this is on here, Selectman.
Capital Outlay Committee, it just recently formed, and we're going to be ready for the next, for the annual town meeting, but we were not prepared to review all these requests for this meeting. But we're asking everybody to give us a five-year projection so that we don't, like it did with the modules. If you remember the modules, all of a sudden we needed six classrooms, and we had to take money on a stabilization.
We've already spent $85,000.
We haven't spent, no, I think it's 20, 20 or 25,000?
Yeah, we spent around 20,000 of the 85 so far, but understanding that the process, because of the vernal pool and the wetlands, we'd have to go through additional permitting, and through the Army Corps of Engineers, and through the state MEEPA process, at that point, the, that, at that point, understanding that we need to go through those processes, like added, like added an additional $30,000 to what it was already initially quoted to do the permitting and engineering.
So the total planning cost would be $115,000, is that correct?
Planning, engineering, and permitting, yes.
Now, when you take that into consideration, you're looking at a bridge right now that I have been told is $1.5 million. That is, at the very least, two to three years away? Is that pretty accurate?
The, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Pleasant Street Bridge?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I say bridge? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the road.
Okay, yep.
So, right now, we're looking at a $1.5 million potential price tag, not taking into consideration that the price is three years from now. This road is not going to be 1.5 million. It is going to be significantly more. My concern is, and will continue to be, where does this project fit in with our capital plans? And how will this project impact other proposed projects, such as the library, the fire department, and the DPW? I'll speak specifically about the library. Since 2000, I've watched the library project get de-prioritized because other projects affected this place or that list. Will this road have a negative influence on that? Again, it gets back to the uncertainty, many unanswered questions, and increased expenses that...
May I?
If I direct you to talk.
Certainly.
Number one, was the voters that rejected the library, so it wasn't like the town officials that prioritized the library. It was the voters. But secondly, we, we got several complaints, and I was at a school committee meeting where we heard complaints, as well as before the Board of Selectmen prior to you coming here, of parents who had students in the school that was concerned about the safety. We have cars that back up to 138. We have cars that impacts the stoplight at 138 that people have had to wait because parents are dropping off their kids. So there is a serious safety issue, and so I'm supporting this. I realize the cost. Obviously, we always have to worry about the cost of anything, but we support this. We've already, the towns, residents have already funded 85,000. They're asking for additional 30,000. And I want to see what the, what the project's going to look like, and we may have to possibly get rid of the maintenance building that they're seeking to cut down.
Well, they don't want the plant anymore, they said. I assume that means they don't want their maintenance.
Not, whenever we get this engineered, and not to fund the money for the building, maintenance building that the school district is asking for, right?
Just, those are all very valid concerns. I've been asked the same questions, but I did just want to touch upon the library since that was specifically mentioned. As you know, Selectman Hall, from our conversations with, specifically with Rep. Haddad last week, we have a grant application that we are on a very long waitlist for, towards the bottom, in fact, for a project that nobody wants to do. It seems like the only thing everyone agrees on is that that project is not going to work, and I also agree with that. However, we also found out, so we, let's back up. We all know that a library won't happen unless it's at least partially funded from a grant, and rightfully so. The grant awarding agency, which reviews and awards the grants, we were told by Mrs. Tavoris, won't take applications, meaning won't even accept them until 2027. So even if we wanted to propose a project for a new library tomorrow, we're going to have to wait six years to even send in that application. So in terms of prioritizing things, my thought is, sometimes priorities are determined just by simple timing. So obviously, we know that this project has some hurdles in terms of Army Corps of Engineers. I imagine that's not, that takes a while. But my thought is, and I don't play a building project onus manager on TV, certainly, but my thought is that the parking lot reconstruction project would happen well before a library happened, because even when we're eligible to send in that grant, day one, 2027, then there's a review process, and then, you know, who knows, there's a, you have to answer their questions, and they'll give feedback, and it's a very lengthy process. And then there's building, the building. So I don't mean to be like the Debbie Downer of the board, and I know you've all worked hard on this, and I really respect, support, and appreciate that, but the library's not going to happen till 2030.
I, I can appreciate what you're saying. And I don't mean to put Kenner on the spot, but as a member of...
Put him on the spot.
As a member of the Capital Outlay Committee, I think what Brett has said carries huge
Yeah, I'm optimistic. I'm hoping that's going to be sooner than that, as
I agree.
Maybe everybody doesn't know, but we were already approved for a $4 million grant, a matching grant, so we would have to come $4 million to add on to the existing library. I am opposed to that, and I honestly think that we can build a library cheaper than that. But that means that whenever it comes up, I believe Mr. Vares said they were number 11. They do about two a year. They fund, the state funds about two a year, so we're talking maybe five or six years down the road.
Just for that.
We may, we may get to, I'm hoping, reject that and come up with a new plan. And as you noted, we can't send an application in now, and they're not accepting applications right now. So we are, I've had conversations with a town administrator. We are looking at different options that I personally feel would maybe be cheaper if it, if it becomes a realistic option for us. So we're checking into other options. I do think it shouldn't cost us, even today, $8 million or $8 million for a library. And I would prefer specifically a library that maybe has a community room or something like that, that people can meet and stuff like that. But that's somewhere down the road.
Yeah, I don't...
I'm hoping it's not in 10 years. If, if it is, I hope that they give people who are 80 years old a discount on lip fees at that point, because that's the age they'll be, hopefully. be, hopefully. But I understand your concerns, and the Capitol Outlay Committee, as you noted, has just begun. Town administrator Mullin's come up with a great format for us to review the, the different projects that come before us, and we will be prioritizing and making recommendations. We don't have the final, final say. The Capitol Outlay Committee does not have the final say. This recommendation is going to go before us, and then it's going to go before the residents.
I do have one final question. I would like to make the motion. There's been great discussion about the school department not wanting to participate in funding this project. So if we vote to fund this project, the town will determine how it is completed. Is that correct?
That is correct. And you actually bring up a good point, and I, I apologize that I haven't made this point, and I don't, I don't want this taken out of context, and I don't mean this as a slight on anybody, because we owe it to work with, even if we are the funding source of the town, we still owe it to the school department, which are the elected officials responsible for dealing with the schools, to work with them. However, the school district was never going to fund this anyway.
Correct.
These are Dyton schools, and contrary to what some in Rehoboth believe, Dyton would be responsible, as we always do, for paying this. The reason why I'm supportive of the project going forward, I'm also have concerns about a one point five million dollar project. We have school committee members that have expressed a desire to re-study a new, I guess I shouldn't say that, capacity issues that have been plaguing the district. But plans can be changed. And whether this passes or not, we are going to come back to the table with the school committee and decide what is best. So for anyone watching, I just want to let you know, those conversations are ongoing. They will continue, and we will devise a plan that sol, hopefully solves the traffic issue, but also, I don't, I want to say this in the right way, also is palatable, but also makes sense and is affordable.
Mr. Chairman, as someone whose wife supervised students, as someone who saw the unsafe conditions on that roadway, I would like to make a motion for the town, for the Board of Selectmen to recommend that the town transfer from free cash an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for planning and permitting costs to redesign the driveway and traffic pattern and add a maintenance facility at the Dyton Elementary School, Dyton Middle School.
I'm going to second that.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I wanted to make one last statement, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I want everyone to know, there has been discussion, rightfully so, of a one point five million dollar price tag. That is a lot of money. I just want everyone to know that, just like with the HVAC system, which was much cheaper than this, I feel we owe it to the residents, to parents in the district, to the students and the educators, that we should ask taxpayers to fund this as a very last resort. We need to exhaust every grant funding opportunity. We need to give periodic updates, and I just feel very strongly that that should be the last thing, is asking the taxpayers to pay this. So I hear everyone's concern. This will get the project rolling, but we certainly don't have to ask people to pay it. We can hold, I don't want to say hold up the project, but we can wait to get a grant to complete it while other discussions are ongoing with the Building Study Committee as well.
I'm supporting this with some peril.
Some what?
Peril, political. But the one thing that needs to happen as quickly as possible is those safety concerns get mitigated. I understand there have been some attempts made to try, but those have to continue. Because from my observations, and from the lamenting that my wife would have, something bad is going to happen there if we're not doing something soon.
And we're trying to avoid that. And we've had conversations, the police department had less staff before when we talked about it, but it might be something we might want to reconsider.
Yes.
That they get involved when these kids are being dropped off and kids are being picked up, as far as speeding things up over there, so.
So what I will support, and the reason why this has not happened is, my understanding is, that community outreach officer position has not been created or staffed, but once it is, since their job is partly traffic enforcement, I would like, and I am happy to request, and, and I will reach out to the police chief, I apologize, I didn't ask him before saying this publicly, what I would like to see, until we have a permanent solution, what I'll call a permanent solution to this, what we should be having happen, is every, I think, drop-off and pickup is one hour each a day, so two hours a day, correct me if I'm wrong, parents of school-aged children, why can't we have the community outreach officer who has a regular eight-hour day do one hour in the morning and one hour at the end of the day, until such time that we have a more permanent solution, and then the other six hours of the day, you know, would be spent doing their regular duties? So that's my idea. I'm happy to make that suggestion when the time comes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and do we know, I know this is kind of off-subject, but do we know if the drop-off for elementary and the middle school at different times, or are they the same?
They were when I was there.
They are.
So maybe a little bit more than that.
The interval is...
The elementary school, I, I don't want to say, actually. I really don't know.
From what I saw, there was overlap. Do they expend it? I don't know. But, Dr. Z, what you said, and I understand there were two members of the school committee who came to that PTO meeting. There are certain issues that we need their leadership on from an educational administrative point of view. We don't have the input with the parents or the influence like the PTO or a principal or a superintendent.
I agree.
Karen, we've already made the motion?
Yes, the motion was ready.
It's been a while. I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Thank you for that support.
Good discussion, everyone.
Yep.
To see, I keep doing that, my apologies. To see if the town will vote to authorize a total expenditure of fifty thousand dollars to be raised and appropriated and/or transferred from available funds for FY22 expenses as follows. Raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, personnel expenses, five nineteen, account five nineteen, board of health, public health nurse, five thousand dollars. Expenses, account one thirty-five, accounting, five thousand dollars. Account one seventy-four, budget reconciliation, one thousand dollars. Account one thirty-two, reserve fund, ten thousand dollars. Account one ninety-two, public buildings, fifteen thousand dollars. Account two thirty-one, ambulance billing software fees, seven thousand dollars. And account nine forty-five, additional insurance costs, seven thousand dollars. Total raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, fifty thousand dollars, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds. Sort of ambiguous there.
Any questions on this article? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I want to be very careful about this, because I don't recall which was coming from which. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Before I make this motion, are we okay to just say, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends Article fifteen as, as the Finance Committee had recommended? Because I don't remember which line...
So yes, to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds.
And we don't have to specify which account is which?
All, all that will happen in the motion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. If you're entertaining motions. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen recommends Article fifteen as the Finance Committee did, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds.
Hold a second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye. Would you like to read Article sixteen?
Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of twelve thousand dollars to be expended by the Board of Health to fund a hazardous waste disposal day in the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And there's a second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye. Article seventeen?
To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to the capital stabilization account, or take any action relative thereto.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend transfer of free cash from a, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, to the capital stabilization account.
Second.
Second. My only comment about this is, I think we're all on board that we want to put as much money as we can in the capital stabilization account, as well as the stabilization account for future expenses, also that we can do some serious planning.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Uh, may I ask the town administrator one question through you, Mr. Chairman? Regarding this article?
Yes.
We had received additional information from our fantastic town accountant, Mrs. Vining, and she had indicated that after our meeting with Finance Committee last week, that there was actually around a hundred fifty thousand dollars more in that account than we had originally anticipated. And so I guess my question for you is, is Finance Committee's recommend, that's not going to change their recommendation at all? They're going to keep theirs the same?
So not at this point. How will anything change? There may be, so no, I don't anticipate anything changing at all. In the balance of our stabilization with the reconcile number, based on the journal entry from the, the article that was approved at the 2020 special town meeting for the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you mentioned, Dr. Z, the balance of the stabilization fund as it stands right now today is seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, oh, like eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
He made the motion. I think we need to vote.
Yes, was it, was it for the two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
And you seconded that?
Yes.
I support the two hundred thousand after one hundred and fifty, that the Finance Committee recommends.
Oh, we're talking about...
Are we still on Article seventeen?
Yeah, sorry. No, no.
Article eighteen already. Article seventeen, yes. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico was also an aye. Article eighteen?
Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account, or to take any action relative thereto.
Second.
Was that was a motion? I was reading the article, right?
Oh, were you making a motion? Oh, my apologies. Sorry.
And the Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer from available funds a sum not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to the stabilization account for free cash.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? I support this.
So if I could, for the regular stabilization account, the FinCom is recommending a hundred and fifty thousand?
We know.
I know that.
They recommend the two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Okay, we're doing it different.
What I said earlier about our goals.
Correct. Yeah, I agree. Any effort that we can make to avoid taxing people for projects that we know need to be done, through grants, through saving money, like everybody does, I'm sure, in their own life, should be done, and those efforts should be made. So I'm happy to support this as well.
And I just want to say this publicly. I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. Mullin on the issue of goals. And when I was running for office, I asked some people...
On the issue of what?
On the issue of financial goals, capital stabilization, and recommended goals. And I asked both the assessors' office and the accountants' office. This is in March. And the answers that I got from Mr. Mullin were right on hand, backed by past practice and experience, and I really appreciate that.
You're doing the old Ronald Reagan trust-but-verify method there?
Well, you know, I want to say that because he had a lot of influence in what I, I said.
Of course.
And I know at some point, he's going to come in with a plan that's more aggressive than that. I'm, at this point, we walk before we run, but we definitely need to do something.
I agree.
Mr. Mullin, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Hull. Thank you.
And I mentioned that publicly for an issue that we're going to be talking about shortly, Mr. Mullin's evaluation.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we get to it. Page twenty-five.
Events running.
I think we need to take a vote.
So you know we have eleven more pages of warrants.
No worries. We need to take a vote on this one. Almost halfway.
We're at the beginning of page four.
Well, Article eighteen, did we vote?
No, we didn't.
We haven't voted yet. So I want to call for, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Article nineteen?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from PEG access funds, a sum of money not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars to be expended by the Building Commission to purchase two mini-split HVAC heat pump systems for the lower-level cable television office and town hall, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
That was a motion. He's reading the article.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The Finance Committee recommends transfer from the PEG access fund. This is for the downstairs in the base, in the basement where the cable equipment is. We need to make sure it's controlled, temperature, humidity, and all that kind of stuff, so we don't lose the equipment.
Wait, you want to be able to control the temperature down there? No, just kidding.
Want to?
Just kidding.
Fun what we do. I mean, we have an AC down there now, and it's, we got a server has to stay at a certain temperature. And Tom was great from that in last year, because as you know, someone was really hot, so we've been waiting a long time for this project.
May I ask them a question about this?
Sure.
Um, this is for the studio, right? Like the expanded area, or is this for that small, smaller part?
So the two mini-splits would be for both sections of our office, one being the side of the office that houses our server.
Yep.
And the other mini-split being for the proposed studio.
Studio, okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Did we make a motion yet? No.
No.
No. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we recommend Article nineteen and to fund it via a transfer from the PEG access fund.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico was an aye also. Article twenty?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the total sum sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be expended by the Highway Department to purchase one mid-mounted boom mower, or to take any action relative thereto.
Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash. If you remember, my colleagues, that when this came before the annual town meeting, or when we went through the Finance Committee, I think we agreed to split, they wanted to purchase a tractor, and then also purchase this equipment. Because of our finances at the time, we decided just to purchase the tractor, and the residents supported that. And now we're talking about the one mid-mounted boom mower. This is the mower, if I'm correct, Mr. Ferry, that goes along the sides of the road, and, am I correct? And cuts the vegetation. By the way, you guys are doing a great job on that.
Thank you.
And I think because of all the rain, you've had to do it more times than, than normal. Any discussion on this? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer from free cash the total sum of sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be expended by the Highway Superintendent to purchase one mid-mounted boom mower.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call...
I did have one question, and I, I know that, I knew the answer to this, so I do apologize, either for Mr. Ferry or Mr. Administrator.
You know the answer. You're going to ask the question?
I forgot the answer, is what I meant to say. Is this used or new? New. I remember now. Okay, sorry. New, I remember now, okay, sorry.
Do we have any other questions?
No.
By the way, this is water, it's not vodka. I wish it was vodka, but it's water. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-one.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for retirees' health care and life insurance benefits, or to take any action relative thereto.
Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash, ninety thousand dollars, and raise and appropriate thirty-five thou-
Thank you.
Thirty-five thousand, so they're recommending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to OPEC.
Correct.
Yes, total funding of one twenty-five, with the breakdown.
Any discussion or a motion? Entertain a motion?
Well, my question for my colleagues would be, before I make the motion, just like with the stabilization account, where we did two hundred and FinCom had recommended fifty, is the Board wanting to do the full one fifty, or are we okay with the one twenty-five? And just for the public, so you're aware, I don't want to say this is an unfunded liability, but it is something that every municipality grapples with, having to pay for people's post-employment benefits, so it is something we're obligated to do, and we're trying to put money away to do, towards doing that.
And we're in better shape than some other towns.
We are, because we do this.
Yes, because we were proactive, and we want to make sure that this is funded fairness to our town employees.
Mister Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer from free cash, ninety thousand dollars, and raise and appropriate thirty-five thousand, for sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, established to cover the unfunded actuarial liability for retirees' health care and life insurance benefits, or to take any action relative thereto.
Second.
Is there a second?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? I'm gonna support the recommendation of the FinCom at this time.
I will as well.
Yeah, so it'll be a hundred, so that one fifty will be one twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
That would be a recommendation to the residents. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-two.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of six thousand dollars to be used for public utilities appraisals, New England Power Company, Massachusetts Electric Company, and EverSource Gas Company, as required by the Department of Revenue for the fiscal year 2022, or to take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash.
Learned my lesson that time.
So this is, my understanding, this is an annual thing that we fund every year, we bring it at a special time meeting to the residents. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends a transfer from free cash to fund Article twenty-two in the sum of six thousand dollars to be used for public utilities appraisals, New England Power Company, Massachusetts Electric Company, and EverSource Gas Company, as required by the Department of Revenue for fiscal year 2022. Karen, you can just write as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-three.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of eight thousand dollars, to be used for assistance for the fiscal year 2023 certification reevaluation of real estate and commercial property of the town, or to take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash.
Just like the previous article is something that we do at the special town meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to ra, to transfer from free cash, the sum of eight thousand dollars, to be used for assistance for the fiscal year 2023 certification reevaluation of real estate and commercial property of the town, or to take any action relative thereto.
This is a recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of sixty-four thousand dollars, to be expended by the police chief, for the purchase of one fully-equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, patrol rifle, radio, antenna, and any accessories relative thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash, and as, I think you heard that at the Finance Committee, Selectman Hull, that on an annual basis, we've agreed that we're gonna always replace, because they get a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, these vehicles, and that we would always purchase a new vehicle for the police department.
From the power plant, yep.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I happily motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to recommend a transfer from free cash in the sum of sixty-four thousand dollars, to be expended by the police chief for the purchase of one fully-equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, patrol rifle, radio, antenna, and any accessories relative thereto.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum not to exceed three thousand dollars, to be expended by the town clerk to purchase dog license and software, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash, and we have the town clerk here, do you have any questions or any comments, do you want to make regarding this?
The only comment really is the software will automate the dog licensing program, we do it all by hand right now, so it won't take a lot of time, and I'm gonna be printed, so it'll be a nicer record for us still.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, can I ask the town clerk a question about that?
Actually, you can.
Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you for being here, Mister Pacheco. My question is, dog licensing software, is this relative to fees, or is like a bill that you would send someone, or is this documenting which house has a licensed dog in the town of Dayton? Sorry.
So this, we, it partners with Unibank, so we'll be able to take fees through the software.
Okay.
Really more of it is, we can write these licenses, and then we put it into a computer.
Okay.
So, once it's in the computer, when someone comes to buy a dog license, we can just print it right out.
Okay.
So your timeline economy goes from five minutes to thirty seconds.
Okay.
And it will also, as far as letters go, to automate that process, so we can collect emails and say some stamps and post it.
Okay. Yeah, sounds like it's streamlining it, so I'm gonna support this. Thank you.
So that the public knows, if you're over seventy, you're able to get a free license, drug license.
That is true. Mister Chairman, oh, we didn't have a motion, did we?
I don't believe it.
Mister Chairman, I'm, I motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen recommends a transfer from free cash not to exceed three thousand dollars, to be expended by the town clerk, to purchase dog licensing software.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye. Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum not to exceed twenty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, to be expended by the police department to purchase twenty-two body-worn cameras and all necessary equipment related to implementation of a body-worn camera policy, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee has no recommendations. It's my understanding that we'll be, we probably will be eligible for a grant, even if this is funded, we're gonna also apply for a grant.
Yes.
So, so yeah, like the Lieutenant of the Police Department has already applied for the grant, and it's our hope that, like, it's our hope that we'll be awarded the grant, so we don't have to fund this at this time.
May I ask? Oh, sorry.
Two questions. Contractually?
Yes.
Are we under any obligation for this?
Yes, to, to impact bargaining, yes. We, right before we, so included in the ratification of the, of the updated CBA with the police union is a reopener specifically for this, so like, if there comes a point, like, in the life of the new CBA, like, where we have funding approved either through a grant or by town meeting for body cameras, we have a reopener there that would allow us to have a conversation and to impact the changes in working conditions for the body cameras.
But, may I make a comment about that?
Yes.
Is that okay, Mister Chairman?
Oh, sorry.
Just about that direct comment. To be very clear, regardless of whether that specific language had been in the CBA or not, if they had approached us to impact bargaining, we would be obligated to sit across the table and negotiate, we would not be obligated to agree to anything, so I just wanted to let you know that as well.
So we don't have an agreement where we have to provide for all?
Correct, no. But, the reason why I'm, the reason why I would be inclined to see how the grant plays out is because if we were to say, people, you should vote for this, and it passes, and then we get the grant, my understanding is that the monies would go back into the general fund, correct? Because we wouldn't use it.
Would it become free cash next year?
Yeah, we would close out the grant, I know, we're going to free cash.
But would remain unused?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I support this, I definitely want to see what a policy is, if we ever get to that point, what the policy is. But this also, it protects the public, but it also protects the police officers.
Correct.
That there's a recording of what exactly happened, so I think it's very important that this, this happened.
So the grant, I mean, obviously, there's no guarantee we get the grant, but if we got the grant, would we be able to use it to refund the expenses that we already incurred? If we purchased this before the grant?
I think we're gonna pause purchasing it to wait till-
Right, we're gonna try to apply for the grant, see if we get the grant.
Yeah.
If we get the grant, obviously, this money is free, or free cash, but if we don't get the grant, then we'll spend this money to purchase the body. But I, I think under the new police law, they're encouraging people to apply, or to promise to apply for grants.
Correct.
Yes, and they made a, in the state, the Commonwealth has made available a substantial amount of, of funding, so, like, if, like, if you're gonna be a community and have an interest in it, like, it really made sense, and our PD was on top of it, like, it really makes sense to try to apply for the funding at the outset, and be part of the, I guess, be part of the movement, if you will.
Sure.
So, the Finance Committee has no recommendation on this, are we thinking from free cash, or raise and appropriate?
I was thinking we weren't gonna make a recommendation either. Am I wrong? But was I not following?
So what I had recommended in my spreadsheet was, was to defer, pending, pending a decision on the grant application, like, so if, like, at a specialty annual town meeting in, like, in June, we would know the status, and at that point, we could propose to fund it.
I'll support your view about that.
I feel fine with that. My, I don't want to say concerns, because I also support this and see the merits in it, certainly. My only, I guess, black box of unanswered questions mostly concerns the data part of it, and how that data is maintained, and how it's accessible, but those are questions that, you know, certainly we would, I will ask when we, we get to possibly having funding for it.
Selectman Hull?
You know, as I look at the timing and the grant application, we could revisit this issue at the annual town meeting.
Come on, yeah, absolutely.
I, I kind of support the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Yeah, me too.
Of no recommendation.
Yep.
I don't think we need to take a vote if we have no recommendation.
Okay.
Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, appropriate, and or transfer from available funds, the sum not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, to be expended by the town clerk to purchase four new ballot scanners, accessories, technical support, and implementation services, or to take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash, it's my understanding, because we're going from two precincts to three precincts, we need the extra, additional scanning machines, is that correct? Selectman Hull?
I'd like to make a motion that the town, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen recommend that the town vote to transfer from free cash, a sum not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, to be expended by the town clerk, to purchase four new ballot scanners, accessories, technical support, and implementation services, or to take any action relative thereto.
I'm gonna second that.
Second. Any discussion?
I do actually have a question for the town clerk, if that's okay, Mister Chairman, and I don't mean to be a frugal fanny about it, but my question would be, I'm sure we're not the only town, after the census occurred, because it happens every ten years, that needs to add another precinct in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So my question for you would be, and I'm sure you've had these conversations or put out your feelers, is there any state funding? Meaning, have you contacted our state rep and asked if there's any type of assistance from the Commonwealth for municipalities in this particular situation? And I'm gonna, I want to be clear, I'm gonna support this, I mean, it is what it is, but I'm just curious.
I appreciate the question, so that was, on my list of questions you asked at the last meeting, when I first, oh, um, do you appreciate anything?
Oh, I'm a broken record.
So I appreciate it. No, so thank you. So I did find out the Secretary of State's Division, Election Division, and basically they did not make any money available for, so I did look into it, they're the ones that, you know, worked with us for this.
Sure. Okay, I believe you.
Thanks.
Good old unfunded mandates.
That'd be great.
I have no further questions on this.
Did we already make the motion?
No, we, I don't believe we have.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends to transfer from free cash. Oh, I'm sorry, he did? Okay, I'm sorry. The keeper of the record has spoken. Thank you, Mrs. Brady.
If there are no further questions of this discussion, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Select Mr. Graffis?
Aye.
And Campa Chico is an aye.
Thank you, Mister Clerk.
And thank you, Miss Brady. Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars, to be expended by the town clerk and town treasurer to purchase two laptop with docking stations and one printer, for use in shared counter space at the newly renovated office of the town clerk and town treasurer and town hall, or take any action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends transfer from free cash. This is because, my understanding anyway, this is because we have a new counter system, and it's gonna be shaded by the town clerk and the treasurer, and they need to have computers set up right there, and they also need a printer when somebody, something needs And they also need a printer when somebody, something needs to be printed, and they can send it to the printer. So, uh, this is as a result of our, you're familiar with the renovations in the town hall.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Okay, sorry. Um, my question on this would be, um, and I, I fully support this. I, I know why it's needed. My question would be, we have a network administration budget. So if this is stuff that deals with technology, getting computers that will be on the network, why isn't, is this just for transparency? I guess I'm just asking why this is a special article.
So with the updates that were, like, with the upgrades that we're making, our two, our two fiber connections working with our IT consultant, uh, and also, like, through Zoom and other projects that we have ongoing, we thought, uh, like, it would be best really to propose this as a separate article rather than, oh, yeah, like, I want to say draining our operational account, but not, uh, interfering with the operational things that we already have planned through the remainder of the fiscal year.
Because it was unanticipated.
Exactly.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends to transfer from free cash a sum of $2,500 for the purposes listed in Article twenty-eight as presented this evening. You're welcome, Karen.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
If not, uh, Selectman Hall, please vote.
Aye.
Selectman Segraffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen G and a half, to allow the Dighton, we hope, the regional school district to establish a stabilization fund for the future capital costs, or take any act, any other action relative thereto. Selectman Hall?
I make these state, um, the comment that I'm about to make is based on thirty-three years of educational experience, a master's degree in educational leadership, and five years as a member of the school committee in preparing five budgets for the Dighton-Rhoboth Regional School District. The idea at this time of the school district having more scrutiny over our tax dollars after two years of state mandated oversight of their budget, and the current multi-million dollar lawsuit against the school district by the town of Rhoboth has me very concerned about extending more fiscal control to the school district at this time. I cannot support this motion.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I asked the Finance Committee, as we remember, at our meeting, even though there are no particular dollars attached to this article, so I was not expecting a recommendation, certainly, but I did ask them if they had any opinions, because they are much more well-versed in financial matters than certainly I am. And the response that we got was basically a hypothetical response that was sort of based on whether or not there were particular questions that would be answered in a way that would be satisfactory to members of the Finance Committee. And my impression, and I may be wrong, and I'm certainly not speaking for any members of the Finance Committee, was that those questions had not been answered, and they also did not have an opportunity to ask them. So, and I'm only speaking for myself here, I am not prepared, nor do I feel comfortable not being able to ask the questions, and certainly not being able tonight, anyway, to get answers. I am not prepared to make any type of, of a recommendation on this. My, I, I don't want to say that I'm against it or for it. I have concerns, certainly, and I'm saying that publicly. Most of my concerns are based on inability to ask my questions and to obtain my answers. So I'm not comfortable supporting this this evening, Mr. Chairman.
I, uh, I don't support it either. I want, Selectman Hall, he has more experience in this field than I do, but I, I do have the same concerns that, that he has, so I'm not supporting this.
I agree.
So do we want to vote that we're not recommending it? Or we just want to leave it and let the residents make their own call? Because I believe Dr. Azar will speak on this at the, uh, special town meeting.
So I'm just gonna speak for myself. I am inclined not to support it, but I would like to give the administration or someone an opportunity to answer the questions everyone has before I take an official vote. But right now, if I, if you guys want to take a vote, I will vote no, because I do not have the answers to very important questions concerning how this money would be used, how this money would be maintained, who maintains this money. So it would not be responsible for me to support it at this time.
We don't have to make a recommendation on this, and we'll, hopefully, we'll have those questions answered tonight at the special town meeting, and we can individually vote, whatever way we want to vote.
I'm fine with that point.
What I know about it, I'm not supporting it.
I just don't want us to vote, because we obviously will all vote no tonight. And then if there is administration present at the FINCO meeting, and we get satisfactory, and I'm talking about a perfect world, then we would have to change our vote. So for me, it's just better not to make that decision. And then let's see what happens at the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to amend the town Dighton's general bylaws by adding the following article, article... There's no number, I guess.
Number, number, number.
Number, number, number. Designated, uh...
Yeah, it would be inserted into the bylaw.
Designated, uh, safety zone. The town of Dighton, having adopted Chapter ninety, Section eighteen B of the Massachusetts General Laws, hereby establish a designated safety zone bylaw with the intent of improving public safety in said zone within the town. The operation of a motor vehicle in a designated safety zone as established by Chapter ninety, Section eighteen B of the Massachusetts General Law at a speed exceeding the speed, at a speed exceeding the speed limit established in said law shall be a violation of Section seventeen of Chapter ninety of said general laws. Designated safety zones, one Pleasant Street area, safety zone Pleasant Street, Water Street, Hot Street, to County Street, Muddy Cove Lane, Cobb's Lane, Old Somerset Avenue to County Street, and Main Street from the Water Street, from Water Street to County Street as displayed in Figure one, Figure two, and Figure three. And we have those, uh, figures in front of us. As, um, we know, I'm not sure, I don't believe, uh, Selectman Hall was on the board, but we had concerns, uh, we had concern residents on Pleasant Street that wanted us to reduce the, uh, the speed limit on Pleasant Street. I believe we took a vote, uh, to reduce the speed to twenty miles per hour, but apparently, we're not, we need this bylaw in order for us to do that.
To enforce it.
To enforce it. And I do have some, uh, concerns about the twenty miles per hour speed limit on Pleasant Street. The residents appear to have been supportive of it. I think there were a couple mem, uh, residents that spoke against it, but most of the residents that we spoke with.
That night, yeah.
That night, and, uh, were a favor of it.
I can't support this, and unfortunately, the reason being, if we couldn't enforce forty, there are no physical barriers going to be put in place. How are we going to enforce twenty? By putting up a sign does not change people's behavior. And as a result, I can't see changing it and creating the confusion and all the problems that are going to come about of trying, or the dealing with the complaints that are gonna come. I just don't see there being a change in human behavior because we changed the sign.
Or maybe we work on forty mile per hour enforcement and work our way up to it.
Well, it's, it's part of the Pleasant Street, if I remember correctly, it's thirty miles per hour, and then it changes to forty miles depending upon which, uh, direction you're going in. But I also, I agree that without enforcement, you can put whatever
Correct.
speed limit, uh, you want.
Mm-hmm.
I know that the enforcement of speeding in town has increased.
Yeah.
And we've had conversations with the, uh, Chief of Police. We will continue to have conversations with the Chief of Police to make sure that it's being enforced. They have done, as some of you may know, they have done, uh, some studies on some of the streets in town, and they've stopped, uh, people for speeding, and come to find out, many of those that were caught speeding were residents of, of that street. So that's kind of the problem.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Hopefully, people don't drive fast, but, uh, I tend to agree with you. I, I don't want it to be twenty miles per hour on Pleasant Street. That's, that's my decision.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Let's make, let's take a vote.
Need a motion?
Okay. Give me one second. Mr. Chairman, uh, I motion that the Board of Selectmen vote not to recommend Article thirty as presented this evening.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, uh, call for a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Selectman Segraffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye.
Mr. Chairman, is that gonna be funded out of free cash? Just kidding, that was a joke.
Dun, dun, dun. Everybody's a jokester now. I work alone.
Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Section one thirty-nine, Section one forty, to amend the town of Dighton's dog license fees as follows. Female, fifteen dollars. Spade female, five dollars. Fees for male, fifteen dollars. Male, neutered males, five dollars. License issued after April first, uh, there'll be a late, uh, or any other action. Licence issued after April first, we have additional, uh, ten dollar late fee for each dog, or take any other action relative thereto. So, uh, what is the difference in the fees then? So we're, apparently, we're increasing the fees, but what, what is it right now?
Uh, so there's some changes. So right now, there's two fees. There's a, there's a five dollar fee after April first, and then I think it's after June first, it goes to fifteen. So confusion for residents have the two fees. Um, and the other fee back I got was fifteen dollars, it's too much. If you have three dogs, it really adds up. So it went down to one fee, it takes the difference of the two, so it's only ten dollars. Beforehand, we were charging the same amount for a spade or neutered, I believe it was a male, an intact male versus a neutered male. But, so by law, they have to be a different price. Has to be more money if you don't neuter your dog. So, um, with that, the spirit of the law, we did increase the intact females and males to fifteen, and that really does keep up the spirit of the law, payable or not, not fixing your animal.
May I ask him a question? Two questions. One, is this an increase in the late fee? And then my second question is, I'm sure it's easy, and I'm just speaking from what I think. I'm certainly never worked in the clerk's office. So please correct me if I'm wrong. I assume it would be easier for your office to identify individuals who had licensed their dog in the previous year, but neglected to do it in a timely manner the next year. I guess my question for you, and maybe you can't answer it tonight, and that's fine. I think the real issue in town is being able to identify households that have dogs that are not licensing them. And so my question for you is, how do we find those households? Or those, excuse me, let me say this differently, it's not a witch hunt. How do we make sure those dogs get licensed?
I love that question. That's my, my favorite subject, dog licensing.
Nerding out.
Yeah. So when you get your dog back safe for rabies, the vet bylaw has to send it to the town clerk's office. So my first job as town clerk was we audited our records, we reached out to all the vets, and basically told them about rule. I don't even know.
Yes.
Send those records to us.
That's awesome.
So as soon as your dog gets that vaccination, we should be getting a letter. And then when we get the letter, the rest of them get a letter.
That's awesome. Thank you for doing that. I really, really appreciate that.
We sent out eight hundred letters this year. Most of them were people who we got rabies vaccines for, and then...
That is amazing. Thank you. I'm so glad you saw that as a priority. I know it sounds like a small thing. It's not about the money. Well, I guess a little bit it is, but mostly, it's about making sure that we know who has dogs in case something happens. So I really just want to thank you. I can't thank you enough for that.
Thank you. And I agree about the money. I, I hope to never raise the price once this is fixed. It should be affordable to license your dog.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's getting late, but, uh, what grandpa, grandpa joke is gonna be, that's your pet peeve?
It's the worst of mine.
So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen recommends Article thirty-one as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman, uh, Hall?
Aye.
Selectman Segraffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Good work.
Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Dighton zoning bylaws, Section six, definition kennel residential by deleting it in its entirety and replacing with the following. Kennel residential, a pack or collection of four or more dogs that are owned or kept under single ownership for personal use and enjoyment may be allowed in the residential or business district subject to the approval of the Board of Health and Animal Control Officer. This also includes a person, personal kennel as defined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one thirty-six A. Note, this section does not apply to properties with three dogs or less. Said residential kennels approved by the Board of Health and Animal Control Officers shall be inspected annually. The Board of Health shall promulgate regulations governing said process for approving and inspecting a residential kennel as so defined in accordance with the applicable Massachusetts General Laws. Appendix A, use regulation schedule of the town of Dighton zoning bylaws shall be amended to reflect these, uh, changes. So my understanding that the, uh, the changes in this is that they don't have to go, get a special permit, or go before the Board of, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, that, listen, the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a kennel license, which would have, which would have cost residents a fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Wow.
That's really, all that they're doing is they're removing that requirement, they're putting a permit in, and it makes the process easier.
My, my concern about the change, though, I, I totally agree that people shouldn't be assessed seven hundred and fifty dollars, but how do the abuddies know that is someone's applying for a kennel license?
So the Board of Health, well, that was part of the meeting, um, to some extent. The Board of Health is working on regulations, and in those regulations, they spell out via bylaws. So it's, they, they, they do specify how far to go out in their regulations. I'm not sure if they voted on it yet, probably not, it was on the special town meeting. But it would, there would be a clear process through the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, yeah, uh, I guess this is a general question, and I literally ask this every time this article comes to a town meeting. Is this the last time we're gonna see this, and is it correct this time? And I don't even mean that in like a just, but I'm, I'm a little exhausted. This is like the sixth, okay, not the sixth, it's the fourth time.
So everybody knows it's not the town administration. This is the first time.
Correct, yes, no, yes.
No, 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 this is the second one. So because we initially, when I got here...
We didn't vote on it, though, right?
No, we deferred it.
Yes.
Correct, because it wasn't correct.
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I really...
I, I agree.
It's about, it's about public confidence.
Yes.
And I, I feel a little bit like Bill Murray in Groundhog Day, and I'm sure other people do too. So I just want us to move past this. We had a very serious issue, so I just want to make sure we're correct, that's all.
So as the town clerk mentioned, we had a pretty extensive conversation with the ACO, with the Chief of Police, with, uh, the Board of Health, with the Health Agent, a town clerk and I, and we really, um, as we mentioned in the spring, uh, like, one of the things, it was one of the first thing I tried to tackle, and I really wasn't act, uh, actually comfortable with where we ended up. Uh, I am comfortable here. Uh, it does address, uh, the ZBA and special permit filing. Um, uh, while at the same time making, uh, making sure we, uh, as a town, hold the reins in the approval process, because we want, uh, uh, any residential kennel with more than three dogs to come forward, uh, and get actually licensed with the town. So this encourages, it's not, um, any type of deterrent. Uh, but a process with the Board of Health where the regulations, uh, actually can be promulgated that are practical, uh, and that deals with all the abuddies issues and everything else, we feel that this is really the, uh, the best path forward. I will mention the Planning Board, at their next meeting on October twentieth, will be holding, and I believe that's at the middle school that evening, uh, will be holding a hearing on this article as well, because it does involve a change, a proposed change to the zoning bylaw. So I do want to make that clear as well.
Thank you. And I, I just want, I, that was not, it wasn't a criticism of anyone.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate that, I, yeah.
My, my only concern was that every time this comes back, people are wondering, and then I just, we need it to pass. So I just want to make sure people understand why it's needed and that have faith that it's correct this time, and that's all. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, are you entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen, uh, vote to recommend Article thirty-two as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, uh, take a vote, Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Selectman Segraffus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to add the following new article. I'm required to read the, the whole article, I assume?
So I don't believe, I've never heard of the requirement. So like, you could interpret it as presented in the warrant, and we do have the warrant here. So I think just, uh, uh, yeah, discussing, discussing the article as presented in the warrant, I think is perfectly fine, Ken. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So this is, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws to add the following new article, and it's Municipal Commission on Disability. We formed about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, the Commission on Disability. I'm a, uh, liaison person for the Commission on Disability, and the state requires us to have, uh, bylaws, and we need to have them approved by the, uh, town residents. So that's why it's coming before the, uh, the residents. And it's three pages, three and a half pages. So as presented to, that was in a packet that we all seen, the public had access to that packet, as well as, we're now presenting it, uh, on Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
So is there any questions about, uh, and the Finance Committee did have some questions, and we did make, uh, we, not we, uh, Town Administrator Mullin has made some adjustments to this bylaw. And with the assistance of, of Ms. Brady.
Hey, good job.
So do you have a question?
I do, actually. Um, I cannot find it here, and maybe I'm overlooking it. Um, one of the concerns from Finance Committee, um, that I shared, and that I think we agreed to make, everybody was in agreement, was regarding the accept, acceptance and management of gifts. And so did we just change that? I couldn't find it anyway. Isn't it there?
It was there, we struck it. So the Commission on Disability would not be able to accept gifts, any gifts.
Okay.
That would be accepted would go through the normal process.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah. Well, that's standard law, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, and, uh, we took out the, uh.
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Yep, and then the open.
Also brought up by the Finance Committee.
And then the sixth, I believe there was some original proposed requirement of, uh, posting, uh, like, or providing notification of meetings, uh, with agendas twelve days in advance.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And we changed that to be in accordance with the open meeting law.
And it's my understanding that the Commission on Disability is meeting this Friday, of all times the meet, but this Friday, to, uh, approve these, uh, or against these changes. So we're hoping that it's a fifteen minute out of hour meeting on Friday night.
Okay.
Selectmen Hull. Good luck. I noticed the attendance requirement. Is that standard for all the committees, for it?
It's not. The actual, I don't want to steal your thunder, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the actual general bylaw says you have to attend sixty percent?
Sixty percent.
Correct.
And what is this?
But there's no like enforce, there's, there's no automatic mechanism to handle that.
No, but usually it's the chairman of the, of that committee or commission, or that board, who has seen that someone's not attending the meetings, will bring it up to that commission.
Commission, sure.
And then it comes back to us, and we would, well, if there's not a, a good explanation why that person hasn't attended, and it's been in the past.
I think once or twice we've done.
Once or twice, and one person was able to let, uh.
Correct.
Let the board know that.
Why?
It might have been some health issues or whatever.
Is it wise to allow them to, where everybody else is sixty, for them to go with three, miss three meetings in a year?
My thought is they can, not they can do whatever they want, but like.
Okay, well, no, no, that's.
They have to like self, they have to deal with that, them internally, so if they're on board, I mean, my thought is, why not?
And obviously if someone's not attending, it's gonna come back before us anyway, and we can decide whether or not the commission was appropriate and recommended that person.
Okay.
No longer be on the commission. Any further, uh, discussion about?
Congress is coming up now and not a year ago.
Well, the, the committee was just formed about a year ago, and I know that, and I know that we worked on it all last winter and in the springtime, and it did not come up at the annual town meeting. You're correct about that, but it is coming up now.
Well, you only had like six to eight months by that time. So you would have had to start right away. So it just was impossible, but.
And there were other things that were going on, organizing and everything else. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I motion that the Board of Selectmen vote to recommend Article thirty-three with the, uh, changes made by our administrative team as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectmen Hull?
Aye.
Selectmen Sografus?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye.
Just wanted to thank you both for making those changes.
Thank you. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with GHDJA zero-three LLC of Dover, Delaware, with a principal place of business at eight fifty New Burton Road, number two, two hundred and one Dover, Delaware, area code, uh, one nine, zip code, one nine nine zero four, or it's assigned, or it's assigns for a period of twenty years, and to approve said agreement, under which GHDJA zero-three LLC with a principal place of business at eight fifty New Burton Road, number two thousand, uh, two hundred and one Dover, Delaware, or it's assigned, I'm not reading that yet, or it's assigned will pay the town, is it repeated in this? Or it's assigned will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to nineteen point six plus or minus acres parcel of land located at eight ninety-three Brook Street, Dyton map, map sixteen, parcel twenty-eight, related to the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar facility with an expected name, nameplate capacity of approximately three point four megawatts. Alternate in current AC and set tax agreement on file in the town's clerk office or take any action relative thereto. Mrs. Goulart worked out the, uh, pilot agreement. I've seen it, I think you've seen it, I think Mr. Hull has seen the, uh, the pilot agreement. It's favorable to the town that we get a lot of more, uh, upfront money versus later in the twenty years. So she worked out a, uh, pretty good deal.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Um.
Is that the question you want to ask?
No, well, I wish. Um, and I don't want to say anything I probably shouldn't. So I guess my question is, for our town administrator, our office had received an email with a status update about this project, and I guess my question for you is, does that impact the way the board should vote on this recommendation this evening?
That's a good question. My recommendation, and I recall, um, the board, in preparation, uh, for the annual town meeting as well, uh, would be that, um, that the board hold off on making a recommendation one way or another, uh, like on Articles, uh, thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay.
And then as, then as we get closer, uh, like especially to the informational meeting, uh, and then the, I mean, then the meeting, the Board of Selectmen meeting on the twenty-seventh, we might have actually updated information relative to the status, um, of both projects that have been outlined in Article thirty-four and thirty-five. That would be my recommendation at this point.
I have one last question, Mr. Chairman. Does, does the, so obviously Finance Committee did not make, um, a recommendation on this, but there is a financial component, and so I guess my question is, are, do they plan on making a recommendation?
I don't, I don't think this.
No?
I believe they traditionally have.
Okay.
All right.
I tend to agree with, uh, Town Administrator Mullin. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to, do we have to read Article thirty-five? Cause I was gonna recommend tablebing both of them.
No, you don't.
I'd like to make a motion that we table Article thirty-four and thirty-five.
I will second that.
So take no action.
Okay, okay, okay.
If I could suggest that the board currently make no recommendation or take no action one way or another on both articles at this time.
I take, I rescind my second.
I rescind your motion.
Thank you.
So I'll ask for your motion. Oh, actually, take no action, so we don't, we're not gonna vote.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And let me just read Article twenty-five, uh, Article thirty-five. Um, apparently we're not gonna take any action on this also, but let me read it. To see if the town will vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section thirty-eight H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with ISM Solar Dyton Three LLC of Arizona with a principal place of business at four thousand nine hundred Scottsdale Road, Suite five hundred Scottsdale, Arizona, or it's, or it's assigned for a period of twenty years, and to approve said agreement, under which ICM Solar Dyton Three LLC of Arizona with a principal place of business at four thousand nine hundred Scottsdale Road, Suite five hundred, Scottsdale, Arizona, or it's assigned, will pay, or it's assigned, will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to a fifty-eight point seven acre parcel of land located at twenty-seven thirty-four Elm Street, Dyton map, zero-two-seven-one-five, map twenty-three, lot ten, related to the construction and operation of a photovoltaic solar facility with expected nameplate capacity of approximately two point eight megawatts. Alternate in current, set tax agreement on file in the town clerk's office or take any action relative thereto. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, actually, we're not gonna take any action, so I don't need a motion again. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to accept as a town roadway known as Billy's Lane and Tommy's Way as described below. Do we know if the Planning Board has already, uh, made a recommendation on this, or are they addressing it on the twentieth?
So they have, I believe, my understanding is, um, uh, can I have the notes in my other binder? I just swapped them out, but I would hold on these recommendations as well. I know on at least two of the streets, I believe there were public hearings on the twentieth as well, so I'd wait on that if possible as well, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I don't have the exact information.
So if it's okay, we use Selectmen Hull, we won't take any action on this article, as well as Article thirty.
Well, actually, about thirty-eight, do.
Yeah, uh, let me just read Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to accept as a town roadway known as Sonny's Way as described below. And Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to accept as a town roadway known as Dyton Woods Road as described below. So we're gonna, and also, is it Dyton Woods Circle Two?
Yes, Article thirty-nine.
Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to accept as a town roadway known as Dyton Woods Circle as described, uh, below. I don't wanna make a big deal out of this, but since, uh, Dr. Z is not here, we've gone through four pages of, uh.
I know.
Sorry. So we're not, uh, we're not taking any action on, I don't know if you heard that, Dr. Z, I don't mean to make, uh, light up.
No, no, it's okay.
But we're not taking any action on the roadways, because the Planning Board is gonna be addressing these, we believe, on Article twenty. Article forty, last article, this, to act upon any other business that lawfully may be introduced at said meeting, and you are directed.
We do not recommend.
And you are directed to serve the warrant by posting contested copies thereof at each of the post offices, at the town hall, and at the main fire station, all in said Dyton, fourteen days at least before the town, uh, time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk, the time and place of meeting at, uh, the post.
I have a question. Um, and I don't know if it's possible to do it this time. Why don't we post it at the North Dyton Station?
I don't know, but I, I know that it's not open.
Townhouse South Fires, not, you know, the main station, south. I don't see anything in the north.
So I think because it's not, I, I don't want to say not always, like, it's not permanently staffed, like Station One, that I don't think there's someone there that like could let you in to see.
Opposed on the windows.
I mean, in, in Rainham, they have a public bulletin board. Whoever thought of doing that, similar to what Rainham has?
Well, we have it at Town Hall, but I guess my question would be, how would someone access it if no one's there to like let them?
Yeah, it sounded like a vestibule that's open.
Correct, correct, that's all I mean.
Yeah.
And I'm not opposed to it. I just, if we're gonna do it, it should be accessible. So do you have any thoughts?
So and, I mean, I do, I do think Selectmen Hull makes a really good point, especially to, oh, yeah, like have that information out to residents of the village in North Dyton. Um, what I guess I would recommend is I will check in with the fire chief, really, to see if, uh, even if the North Dyton Fire Station is not actually identified, if we could do it now, uh, like after the warrant is approved, and then if we have the ability to do it now for informational purposes, uh, when we get to the annual town meeting, we can include it, uh, uh, as listed if it works and if it's possible, but we can, if it is a, if we do have the ability to post at the North Dyton Fire Station in the meantime, we could do it anyways, uh, even if it's not.
A requirement.
Exactly.
Yes. We can go above and beyond, like, like we do when we post it on the website.
Okay, another little business, review, discuss, and act, and approve, and sign special town meeting.
Do we have to approve Article forty?
No, no.
Okay.
It's not really anything.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're not gonna be, well, I think you're opposed to it.
I am.
I'm in favor of it, but I, no, I don't think we need to take any action on it, basically. Uh, so I will entertain a motion on signed special town meeting warrants. Approve and sign special town meeting warrants.
Oh, okay.
Right?
So we do have to take.
No, we're taking a vote on all the warrants, not just forty, but, uh, to play some other warrant. We have to, don't we have to take a warrant, then we have to sign the warrants?
We already voted to put the articles on the warrant. I think there were some outstanding items that we did not make recommendations on, so I don't think we should vote on it as a whole.
As a whole, because all the recommendations came individually.
Correct.
So, uh, yeah, all you have to do now is actually to sign, so we don't make, based on the recommendation.
Which I will make a motion.
So we don't have to vote to put these warrants, because we.
We did.
We did that a couple of weeks ago. Regardless of the recommendation, that's, we're not talking about that, we just need to, uh, to sign the warrants. Okay, so.
So Mr. Chairman.
So what do we review and discuss and act on then?
Well, we're just, I'm gonna make a motion, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, for us to sign the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, uh, Selectmen Hull, how do you vote? Selectmen Sografus?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye. Review, discuss, and act on Town Clerk's recommended, recommended border precincting, map, which is.
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you.
So in your packets, there should be three items. There's a map of the, the three precincts, that's a final map. Uh, there should be a block report and a legal description. This morning, there was a slight change to the legal description, which I, I did provide to the, um, Selectmen's Office, but I just wanted to pass that again, just to make sure you guys have the right one. It's very important, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So I, I'm here for the second time. Um, all I need is a vote to approve it. Um, since the last discussion, there was two questions. One was funding, which we already talked about, and the second was the current venue, the elementary school, would it work? I talked to the Board of Health, we will make it work as far as, um, COVID regulations, from what I'm told, this, other than the mask, there's none as far as distancing and capacity. Um, what will it look like in April? We don't know, of course, but, um, we believe the venue will work. So I'm just looking for a vote to approve the map as you have it.
I do have one question, if it's okay? So, I know you're second here and that. My question for you is, it looks like I'm in the, right? For, for example, it looks like I'm in the same precinct. Are there any, um, I, I would assume there are people who will not be in the same precinct.
Correct.
Um, will there be some kind of a notification to let, so that people notice check, or?
Yes.
You know, it might be different, they may not know which line to get into when they get, um, to vote, so.
Yeah, I have to notify them, that's.
Okay.
I have no choice, so once you approve it, this will go to the local election review commission, we'll get a letter of approval, then we'll work on getting a letter out to residents, letting them know of the change.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was in precinct two, I'm now in precinct three.
Oh.
Very nice.
No. No. He's a creature of habit, Mark.
No, I agree.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, do you have any questions, Selectmen Hull?
No, I do.
You're good? Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we vote to accept the re-presington as presented by our town clerk this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, uh, Selectmen Hull, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Sografus?
Aye.
And Campachico is an aye.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being patient.
My pleasure, I enjoyed it.
Selectmen's reports and comments. Uh, just for the record, we've got thirty-four minutes left of the meeting.
Um, so, actually, I'm not going to present on this, since we aren't crunch for time. If anyone is interested on the excessive, in the accessibility improvements that we all worked on as part of the Massachusetts Office on Disabilities Grant that we submitted last week, please look at the packet. Um, each project is outlined with visuals, um, as well as comprehensive descriptions and totals for the requests, so, please feel free.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your work on it, and I see that a lot of the rec, uh, a lot of the, what you're asking for is regarding our parks. I was with, uh, our ADA coordinator, Jonathan Gale, when the KMA came around to the different parks, and there was definitely a need for changes, and I've heard from residents considering about some of the conditions of the parks, I'm sure. Kevin Smith was very active in this, so I want to thank you, uh, for applying for this grant and your work on the grant.
Well, and thank you for working with our ADA coordinator on the first part, which was the KMA ADA five oh four self-evaluation and transition plan. So, none of this would have been possible if we didn't have that.
Sure, I just, I just want to say, though, you did a lot more work than what we did for the, for the grant. This, I went through the whole grant, and it's been a lot of, and, I was gonna say Selectman Mullin, but you were a Selectman, but, uh, I don't know.
Just not here.
Uh, Selectman Mullin for your work and Jonathan Gale's work.
Thank you, everybody. It was a team, and Mr. Ferry as well, and Mr. Aggie R.
That's right.
Couldn't do without everyone.
New business. Uh, we, uh, on ten, twelve, twenty-one, we received a letter to whom to make a certain, this is to notify you, that William J. Mendoza is retiring on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Sincerely, William J. Mendoza. So, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Do you have anything to say, Mr. Ferry?
I'd like, who's that?
Do you have comments, Mr. Ferry?
Uh, just, uh, to thank Bill for his service, he was with us since two thousand eight, he's been foreman since, uh, two thousand twenty, and he needed to resign for personal reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Selectman Hull?
Mr. Ferry. You're very fortunate, you have a wonderful crew. You guys do a great job for the town, and I'd like to, at this time, to make a, a motion to accept with sincere thanks and appreciation the resignation letter for retirement of William Mendoza.
I'm gonna second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to sec, uh, echo Mr. Ferry's sentiments. Uh, Mr. Mendoza, uh, served the town very honorably, um, and he just did an amazing job, so, thank you so much, and I really hope you enjoy every minute of your earned retirement, sir.
He most recently worked on the, uh, stone wall next to the modular library, the opening, which came out great, so, I happen to see him working there, so, we appreciate that. He's a hard worker for your department. Did we get a, a second? We got a second?
We did, no vote.
Yes, uh, Selectman Hull, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. And while you're still there, uh, Mr. Ferry, uh, to whom they make a certain, this is from, uh, Superintendent of Streets, Tom Ferry, regarding appointment of a new foreman, class one. Please consider Nicholas Sisson for a new, for our foreman, class one vacancy. Nicholas is our most senior qualified applicant. Take note, start date of October eighteen, twenty twenty-one. Is he able to, uh, start while we still have the other foreman, because he's still?
Nope, I think there's a start date.
Well, he's signing on the thirty-first.
Oh, oh, because that's October thirty-first, you're right, sorry.
The start date is October eighteenth, and we able to, we would have two foremen, I think. Am I correct?
So, I believe if I could, Mr. Ferry has done an analysis of his budget, and I believe you concluded that, uh, it would be able to be done, correct?
Financially, there's, with all the, the fifties count lines, he's enough money there to fund this, yes.
Entertain a motion?
Uh, m-
Do you have a question?
It, I'll ask it during, um, after seconding it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, appoint Nicholas Sisson as a foreman, class one, with a start date of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
I have a question.
Okay.
I was too quick.
Yes.
You tried, it's okay. Um, my question is?
You have a right to any question you want to ask.
I appreciate that. Is the reason for the overlap, like, a training?
Yes, we need to get the, the whole shop settled before snow season be appropriate. We also need to consider, uh, filling another position, now, there's, there's another vacancy.
Thank you.
Yes.
That was a good question. I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull.
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Thank you, very much.
Next, uh, item is the, uh, recommendation to expand membership of the Development and Industrial Commission. You're on that, uh, commission, and I believe you want to expand, uh, the number of members from five to seven?
Yes, and I just would like to add that we had a discussion on the number, and we felt that, um, one, we wanted to include, um, someone from the Bristol County Agricultural School, as Mr. Mullin has pointed out, so Dayton can work to maintain its rural character. We would also like to bring someone from the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce, someone from the outside, to give us, just like, input from Circuit, but also ideas from other towns that are a member of the Chamber. We can learn a great deal from building partnerships with other communities, whether it be Taunton or Berkeley. Um, is Rainham a part of the Chamber as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically, the Taunton area?
Yes.
Okay.
The Taunton area is Taunton, Rainham, Dayton, Berkeley.
Okay, thank you.
So, just as we'll be reaching out the Circuit, we would like to reach out the Taunton area. Uh, we talked about nine, we talked about eleven, we thought it would be too unreal, too difficult to communicate, bring people to get, you know, get everybody on the same page.
And it's hard to get stuff done when they're there.
I'm left with two.
Correct.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion to, uh, that the Board of Selectmen accept the recommendation to expand the membership of the Development and Industrial Commission as requested this evening.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Thank you for everyone's work on this, revitalizing this commission, very appreciated, and it's very important for the town, so, thank you.
In the, uh, it's my understanding that the, uh, committee has voted with three, they have three recommendations for new members of the committee.
That's correct.
So, there's a recommendation that to appoint Dr. Raphael Delphin to the Development and Industrial Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Appoint Lauren Howard as the Bristol Aggie Agricultural High School representative member to the Development and Industrial Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call-
I just want to, one quick comment. Mr. Mullin is working on an IT grant, and at no charge to the town of Dayton, Ms. Howard has already made an impact on the town, providing free consulting work in helping us upgrade our technology in this building, so?
That's great.
She's gonna be a, a very positive addition to, to the town.
Well, it was a good idea, see? Good work.
It's a team.
I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Appoint John Gaggett at, as the town Chamber of Commerce representative member to the Development and Industrial Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? The counter call for votes, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye, passes. We rescind the appointment of Delphin Dosamito from the Development and Industrial, uh, Commission. This is, uh, someone who I believe we contacted after, uh, and you made, uh, a lot of effort to, uh, contact him.
Yes.
There's been, uh, no response, so, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen rescind the appointment of Delphin Dosamito from the Development and Industrial Commission.
Is there a second?
Effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Appoint Jonathan Lawrence to the Historical Commission. We interviewed him last night, he's really motivated to be part of the Historical Commission. He's a young kid, he, yeah, appeared today. Uh, he's been in town eight years, and he wants to learn more about the town of Dayton and its history, and, uh, we look forward to working with him for it. Entertain a motion.
Before I make that motion, if it's okay, I just wanted to ask, is Jonathan Lawrence related to E.D. Lawrence and the Lawrence family of County Street?
Yeah, we did not ask that question, and we didn't think it was appropriate to ask him that question.
Okay. I'm just curious, everybody's related in this town?
No, I had the same, uh, I was thinking of Jonathan Lawrence.
I, I had the same question.
But, I'm not, I don't think so.
I'm still, yeah, okay.
He said he moved into town eighty years ago, so I suspect, so I suspect that he's not real.
Okay.
I, I know, I'm impressed.
Okay, good.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we appoint Mr. Jonathan Lawrence, uh, to the, uh, Dayton Historical Commission.
I second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Selectman Segravus?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Full commission.
Full, it is a full commission.
It's awesome.
One of our full commission set up.
Everybody.
And your commissioner's A.D., industrial, uh, development, development, industrial, let me see, I'm talking like, uh, I'm getting the name of the development and industrial committee?
I know what you meant.
Uh, appoint Ethan, uh, excuse me, appoint Diane Heath as special agent for tobacco enforcement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call-
Yes.
Yes.
I just, someone had actually asked, I know this is crazy, a resident did reach out and ask me what this position is, and my response to them was, I believe that this individual, I don't want to say enforces the tobacco, the state tobacco regulations and contact, like, ma- make sure the convenience stores are abiding by the letter of the law and all that?
Yes, it's my understanding that we belong to a consortium, uh, called the Western Bristol County Tobacco Prevention Collaborative, uh, and, and the collaborative through that grant funds Mrs. Heath's work, uh, and as a result, the collaborative makes her available to do enforcement work in Dayton, and, but in order for her to perform that work, we have to authorize her, uh, as the agent, special agent.
Taunton has had this, you know, um, big tobacco, had a settlement at the federal level. As part of the agreement, they had to provide funds for education and for enforcement officers. That's when the mo- funding comes for this grant. Uh, the fact that Dayton is involved, it isn't just enforcement, it's also education of the stu-, mostly focused on the students, to try to prevent them from smoking, so, it's, it's very positive, but it's not just enforcement, it's not Big Brother coming down on just that.
Thank you. There was, I didn't know that there was also, um, an education component, that's great, thank you.
I believe we, we've already made a motion, second. Call for votes, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Appoint Nathan Conti to the Cable Television Commission, I believe he's here, he's observing us.
Okay.
So, I will, uh, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, very much, we appreciate it.
So, you still need one more member, is that, am I correct on the key?
Okay.
I'll call for a vote, Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Is the facilities request for One Connection LLC job fair? The next request is to use, uh, this, uh, building, uh, to have a job fair, to hire people. The Dayton residents are encouraged to, uh, apply for this position, and they're prioritized, but they're asking to be able to use this facility. Every committee, uh, the Board of Health and everybody else has already signed off on it, I, I'm correct, and, uh, it's now up to us to approve it, and just sign the necessary paperwork if approved.
I know, oh, sorry.
Yep.
I don't mean to be nitpicky, and I'm obviously gonna support this tonight, um, but I would be remiss if I did not, uh, mention, and I don't mean to sound a little bit like a curmudgeon on this, um, but I should not find out from a social media post that there's a job fair happening at a town facility. I did receive a question from a resident about it, um, so I was a little shocked to see that it was announced before the board had made its recommendation. Again, I'm gonna support it, but if we could just?
Yes, nope.
Get out in front of these things?
Yeah, no, point.
And just have it done properly?
Very taken.
No, 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 that makes sense.
No, you should be, no.
Somebody would have egg on their face if we voted no, just out of principle, but you're right.
Perfect, good, thank you, Dr. Z.
Thank you, and with that, I'm going to motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the, uh, facilities request from One Connection Corporation as presented and prepared this evening.
Is there a second?
Second, I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, obviously, they have intentions or goal of opening in December. To the best of everyone's knowledge here, the, regarding the permitting process, everything's going well?
It is, and, and please co-, um, give more detailed information. My understanding is that, um, they are in the process of getting on the Board of Selectmen's, uh, Board of Health's agenda, because the last hurdle they have is to obtain a retail sales permit, and they are in the process of doing that, correct?
Yeah, so the Board of Health is meeting tomorrow night, they're on the agenda, uh, for that retail sales permit, uh, we've been working with them to get everything in line, working with the Chief of Police to have the security plan, uh, all considered and reviewed and all that. Uh, one of the things, um, as, oh, I guess, I guess the senior members of the board know, um, in twenty eighteen, the Board of Selectmen entered into two host community agreements with One Connection, uh, one, I believe, for medical marijuana, and one for dispensary and cultivation purposes, uh, there is-
And medical?
Yes, I'm sorry, I always get that wrong. Um, there is a transferability, um, the ownership of the entity, um, that, uh, received the HCA in twenty eighteen, they, uh, that organization has, has since resolved, has, has since evolved, uh, like, and based on the transferability language in the HCA, it's expected that actually One Connection will be back in front of the Board of Selectmen, uh, like, uh, requesting a transfer, uh, like, in the HCA, which is what the HCA allows for, they'll be here at the next meeting, uh, and they, uh, they, the, they, the applicant, Mr. Fonseca, and his attorney at that point will be able to up the board, uh, on where they are, uh, like, when they're gonna, hopefully, you'll be opening, and what steps at that point they have left, uh, like, so, like, it'll be, um, an up, it'll be a transferbil- transferability request, but also an opportunity for One Connection to update the board and update the town on where they are, so, things are moving along.
This is a long time coming, as you know, it's probably about three years, maybe, right? It's my understanding they're gonna open up in December. I guess I saw that on social media, uh, but I think they're gonna open up in December.
And I just want, you know, Mr. Chairman, there are people, and we, we all want to get out of here, so I'll be brief, there are people who, and I respect and understand concerns about a cannabis, uh, business, okay? Totally understand that, okay, parents with kids, I get it. Um, I was speaking to, and I just want to touch on the upside to a business like this. I was speaking to a colleague, uh, that lives in Somerset, and as you know, they have solar therapeutics, and initially, solar therapeutics had, and I believe they're just recreational, they had projected, basically, bringing in and giving to the town about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Last year, they paid, uh, to the town over five hundred thousand dollars, based on whatever their sales were, so I just want to let everyone know, totally agree, um, but this town needs business, and the potential for this One Connection Corporation and the cultivation facilities, um, that will be inhabiting the, uh, Spring Street Mill, um, is really limitless, um, and I'm really grateful that One Connection saw it through and stuck with Dayton, um, so I just want to thank everyone involved, and thank you for being in touch, um, and working closely with them as well to make sure that this happens.
And it's strictly enforced, I mean, there's so many requirements and security issues and everything else. I've been, uh, over fifty years, I thought cannabis should be legal. Uh, I'm glad that it's legal, I'm glad that there's control by the towns and the state regarding this. It's a source of revenue for us, and, uh, disappointed that it's taken this long to get it, because those that started at the beginning, they made more revenue, which meant more revenue, uh?
Yes.
More revenue for the town, but really, it's, they're very strictly, you just can't, you know, walk in, you're gonna show an ID, if you, if it's a medical thing, you're gonna have a medical card and all that kind of stuff, so it is very strict. I understand parents', uh, concern, I, you know, I, when my daughters were young, I had the, the same concerns, uh, but it is really, uh, well-maintained, and I look forward to the opening of this, uh, place in, in Dayton.
I'll be there. We'll be fighting for that first spot this year, I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Cannabis commission, are they active?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, the, the Policy Advisory Board?
Right.
Yes, but we only, like, the last time we met, it was because we needed to revise the flow chart to account for.
Yeah, I don't, they don't get involved on, I think, on recommendations for particular.
Oh.
No.
Facilities. But the planning board does an excellent job on this, so they, you know, they go through everything.
It was more like, um, there were decisions that needed to be made in the beginning about, um, how many we allow and all that. That's what they were, not, not making.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do we already have a motion and second to allow them to use this facility? We do?
Yes.
Second.
I mean, uh.
I'll call for a vote, yes. It's, it's been a long day. Selectmen Segravas?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye. Request a place to sign on town property for BP's Craft and Fair. Apparently, it's gonna be on November twentieth, largest venue ever, right in the gymnasium. So they're asking permission to put, uh, so I assume it's gonna be like in front of Town Hall, and it's, do we know the specific?
Question, um, yes, that's what they'd like to place it. We thought maybe it could go in front of the library, um, or somewhere where they have to. They'd like to put it downtown, huh?
Yes.
Selectmen Hall?
What kind of sign?
Just, I believe, a regular lawn sign.
It's like those.
A lawn sign, not a light.
No, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, cause one.
They're moving in and they bring.
You know, you know what I'm thinking, okay.
Yeah, driving through, it's called the Berkeley Common. The Berkeley Common has allowed one, or the Town of Berkeley, and, yeah, like, I just speak to it because I drive by it every morning, but it's, it's, it's like a regular lawn sign.
Okay, I'm good with that.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve Bristol Plinett's request to place signage on town property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segravas?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Next agenda items is Chapter sixty-one, eight, a right of first refusal to Reed Brothers Farm off of William Street, map sixteen, lot twenty-four. If the board remembers, two meetings ago, I made a motion to that the town purchase this property, there was no second, so we didn't take a vote. So I assume in the, you know what they say when you assume, but I assumed that that meant that person who was interested in this property was able to go forward and purchase the property. Apparently, apparently, that's not the way. We need to vote on refusing to, to accept, to refuse to, to purchase this property. So, and I'll stay, I'll continue on my same position, but we really need a vote. It's not gonna be on the warrants, so I know how it's gonna go, but we need a motion and a second to refuse the first right of refusal. Makes sense?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the, uh, that we waive the right of first refusal for the, uh, property as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, you're right, it's, it will waive a right to refusal.
We do not want to purchase it.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segravas?
Aye.
And I'm a no. Sorry you had to wait so long.
See, if you answer any questions you had.
You were here to hold us accountable, and I appreciate that.
He was here at the last, we were, it's been here the last three meetings, so.
You think I could get an email sent to me so I can give it to my attorney that it's waiving the right of a first refusal?
Yes, okay.
The least we could do, Mr. Chairman.
I'll stop up tomorrow and for next day, just give me my email. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Roderick.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you for entertaining it.
You're welcome. Thank you. The next time is review process for Town Administrator's six-month evaluation. Should we hold off on this only because we've got less than ten minutes to go through the rest of the?
I feel like I could make this short. My question is why.
You can make this short.
Yeah, I do. I was confused why this was on here. Are we committed to doing this? I don't have any issues.
Yeah, we have to do a six-month evaluation, and we have to kind of discuss the process of it. I know how we, you and I have done in the past. Selectmen Hall wasn't a selectman at the time, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, uh, regardless.
Yes.
So.
Do you already have a vehicle in place to evaluate?
We have a, yes, we have a formal. What's happened in the past is, uh, he, uh, Town Administrator, Valerie did it before, Town Administrator does a self-evaluation.
Right.
We do our own evaluations individually. We don't share it with anybody.
Right.
He, uh, the Town Administrator gets to see those, and then we have, it has to be at a public meeting. We have a public meeting, and then we kind of know what. We vote for it. You'll present your evaluation, I'll do mine, I'll do yours, and, uh.
It's how we did it when I was on school committee with Frank Connor.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do we need a vote on that, or do we, uh, we want to also schedule this too? I, I would prefer that it happened after the annual, uh, excuse me, it's a special time meeting.
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
Or in two, in two weeks, we, we've had to rush through this meeting now, I don't want to rush through the evaluation.
That's okay. And he's doing a self-evaluation.
He's just a self-evaluation.
So.
Is that November fifteenth? No, it's November tenth is that next, uh, first meeting, only meeting in, in November's, November tenth, I believe.
Yes. So is it possible, based on that timeline, Mr. Chairman? I mean, I, uh, yeah, like, if I get you my self-evaluation a little later than the Monday, October eighteenth that I proposed, just so I'm not scrambling?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
I do have a question, because I haven't seen the instrument.
Okay.
The form.
Is it?
I will.
Is it goal-based evaluation or performance-based evaluation?
So it, um, it has different sections with different criteria?
Did we get rid of the goals?
I thought.
Yes, so it's performance-based with the ability.
Okay.
After the performance review to identify, to then identify goals.
But the, but the scoring, to answer, to fill this in, now I remember, is not based on that, so.
It's based on performance, not goals.
Correct. The goals don't count towards anything.
Okay.
But they are there.
Okay, you have an idea as to what we're gonna do. Why don't we vote on it at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have an idea as to what.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Congress silence, we got a Congress silence from One Connection LLC. Is a medical and recreational cannabis dispensary located in North Dyton. We are slated to open late December. Our management team has extensive experience in cannabis industry. We believe everyone needs a connection. We are looking for professional, enthusiastic, knowledgeable individuals in the right area to connect with us and work in a fast-paced environment.
Do we have a TIF with them?
We have a.
Host community agreement.
No.
They don't get a tax, I don't want to say break, but, no, nothing like that.
Yeah, we have a host agreement with them, that they have to pay the town a certain, uh, three percent.
Correct, and there's some upfront monies as well.
Right, but there's no promise that they'll hire ex-male Dyton people or priorities?
There is in the host community agreement. They said they will make every, I forget the exact, every attempt to hire Dyton people first, if, if everything is equal with the community, yes.
Minutes, except for review, the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, July tenth, twenty-twenty-one, September ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Selectmen Segravas?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of August eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Segravas, aye.
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Did you have any issues? I was wondering why you didn't do those together, no?
I just thought we ought to do them separately, just in case somebody.
Yep.
The others were accepted for review, these are, that's all there is, why? I had no issues.
No worries. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as presented this evening.
A second?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Uh, Selectmen Hall, how do you vote? Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Approval of the warrants?
It's right here, my apologies. Okay, warrants. Selectmen Goulat was a lot more organized than me.
I miss it tonight.
I do, too. The, uh, Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the, uh, the following warrants, all dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Fourteen A dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. Fourteen B dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents. And fourteen C dash twenty-two in the amount of one thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, uh, how do you vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants, all dated October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Fifteen A dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred six thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents. And fifteen B dash twenty-two in the amount of five hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-one cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a vote, Selectmen Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Uh, any public input? It can only be you guys. No public input. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.